Well, good evening, everyone. And welcome to the August 16, 2011, meeting of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Bennett?
Here.
Member Brenda?
Here.
Members Sprague?
Here.
Members Swanson?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. Second matter of business this evening is the approval of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as set forth?
I'll move second.
Move second, we approve the meeting agenda as set forth. Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those say nay. Carried. Next is adoption of the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Yes, Your Honor, I do. Four E.
All right. Anyone else? With the exception of four E, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved second, we approve the balance of the consent agenda with the exception of four E. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those say nay. Carried. Then moving to four E. Members Sprague?
Yes, Your Honor. Just am looking for some background on the jaws of life, the current use, and a little bit about what the replacement is for.
Councilman Mary Shear, the Fire Chief. Just a summary of the purchase request. It is for what's often referred to as the jaws of life or hydraulic rescue tools. We applied for and received a grant from the federal government for the Assistance of Firefighters Grant Program of $46,800 for the purchase of these. These are used primary for auto extracations. The new automobiles have a high-strength steel in them called a boron steel, which usually requires about 100,000 pounds per square inch of cutting force. Our current equipment has about 60,000 pounds of cutting force. And the new equipment has, that we're requesting would have about approximately 130,000 pounds of cutting force. And therefore, we would need this equipment to cut through the newer automobiles that have the high-strength steel in them. And our city matches about 10 percent of the cost. So we purchased two sets of rescue tools with this money.
Chief Shear, how often now are you using these now?
We use them quite frequently. A lot of people don't think we have as much activity as we do, but we often go out, we can be up to a couple times a week, at least several times a month we use these tools, and often several times in a day.
I want to congratulate you for receiving the grant. That's a lot of money. And obviously, these are going to go to good use. I was surprised to learn that these are being used even a couple times a week. So somebody is going to benefit from this directly with their life. So thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Any other questions for the chief? Do you want to move four E?
So moved.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of the passage of four E say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say nay. Carried. The next matter we have, after skipping past special recognitions and, actually, it's part of special recognitions and presentations, is the Images of Edina Photo Contest Winner Presentation. And I think, Jordan, you have that matter.
And I'm going to be presenting the winners of the 2011 Images of Edina Photo Contest. This is the city's eighth annual photo contest. It was first established in 2004 to collect and recognize photos that capture Edina as a preeminent place to live, learn, raise families, and do business. As in years past, a panel of volunteer judges chose winning photographs based on a number of criteria, including subject matter, composition, clarity, degree of difficulty, Edina relevance, and overall impact. This year's judges were Brett Ryan, who is the Art Director for Edina Magazine, Vilharz, owner of 49 Photography, Polynorman of Polynorman Art, and Marty Dahl, Communications Coordinator at the City of Burnsville. This year, we received 140 photographs in entries, so there were a lot to choose from. Judges chose winning photographs in the five categories representing the city's vision statement. Of those photos, one was chosen as best in show as the overall winner. In addition, a new this year, we did a Reader's Choice Award, which is being given, which was based on the number of votes that were tallied on Edina Magazine's website over the course of the month of July. At this time, I'd like to present Sarah Baumann of Edina Magazine to give a few words here.
Sarah, welcome.
Hi. Thank you for having me. And a big thank you to the city for officially partnering with Edina Magazine on this year's Images of Edina Photo Contest. It's been, it's a pleasure to be here tonight, and I'm happy to be honoring these great photographers who did a fantastic job of capturing the spirit and beauty of our community. As Jordan mentioned, I'm the editor of Edina Magazine and have been for about two years now. And just a bit of background about us, we were launched back in 2004. We reached approximately 25,000 readers each month, and were available free to all residents of the city. Our magazine has steadily grown through three publishing houses and is now happily successful as the leading community lifestyle publication in the Tiger Oak Wheelhouse, where it's been for almost three years. Over the years, we've had the pleasure of partnering with the city on many stories. Last year, for instance, we ran all the winning Images of Edina photos in our pages, and we're excited to do so again this year. With that, let me talk this year's photo contest. The first year of our partnership seemed to be a screaming success from our end. Despite a couple of hiccups, as is likely with any first initiative, we felt that the ability to submit photos directly to our online server was a great success and service to our participants. And it certainly made our job easier in acquiring high-resolution imagery for our magazine. We had a huge response this year, receiving 140 images. The great turnout and fantastic images made us all very pleased. This year, we added a Reader's Choice voting category, where people were able to select their favorite photo and vote online. It turned out to be a fun, interactive opportunity, and the community really responded to it. Overall, from our perspective, the partnership certainly seems like a win-win-win. The contest gets twice the publicity. We get the photos for use in our magazine, as does the city. And most importantly, the participants get a little extra prize for winning. We're ever so excited and much looking forward to continuing the partnership next year and beyond. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. At this time, I'd invite Mayor Hovland to come down in front of the dais to congratulate our winners and pose for a quick photo, which will be taken by Communications Intern Emily Kastner. So without further ado, the winning photographs are The Final Step by Matthew Casey, winner of the Living People category. I don't think that she, or that he is present tonight. I got a call from his mom. I think he's in camp right now. The next one?
Can we ask questions?
Sure.
Jordan, can we go back to that previous one? Where is that?
You know, I thought about it, and I'm not 100 percent sure. I think that it's-
It's somewhere in Edina, though, right?
Yes.
Oh, I'm going to have to find that place.
I'm wondering if it's not along a tunnel for the railroad tracks, maybe that run under Eden?
It's a culvert on West 70th Street for the CP rail.
Thank you, Wayne. All right. The second one is Quoting Canada Geese on a Mini Haha Treak by Martin Freeman, winner of the Living Plants Wildlife category.
Is that the word? No, photo thing.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. The next one is Planting Spring by Rebecca Schmall, winner of the Learning category. Next one here is Chain Link Chopper by Lindsay Koch, winner of the Raising Families category.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, I want to know, where do we go on future? I think it's a current-ish picture. I'm sorry.
That's fine.
How do you go back? There we go.
All right. Next winner is Happy Customers by Rebecca Schmall, winner of the Doing Business category. And winner of our Reader's Choice is Red Fox and Pamela Park by Brett Rogers. And this year's Images of Edina Best of Show Award goes to Rebecca Schmall for her photo Happy Customers. We want to thank you, everyone, for entering, and we look forward to seeing the submissions next year, which will be due in mid-June again. Thank you.
We have one public hearing this evening, and Director Teague has this matter. It's potential preliminary plat with lot width and lot area variances at 5829 Brookview Avenue for Kirby Herman, Resolution Number 2011-79. Director Teague?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. This property is located on the east side of the city, 5829 Brookview Avenue. It's located just north of Pamela Park in the 5800 block of Brookview. The applicant is proposing to divide his existing 100-foot-wide lot into two 50-foot lots. Currently, there's a single-family home on the property, Rambler-style home, as shown on the screen, and would like to tear the home down, the existing house down, and build two new single-family homes. The request requires a subdivision or preliminary plat before the council this evening, and lot width variances from 75 feet to 50 feet for each lot, and lot area variances from 9,000 square feet to roughly 6,700 square feet for each lot. This entire area was originally platted with 50-foot lots. However, when the properties developed in this area over time, some chose to purchase two lots, combine them, and build one single-family home. Some lots in this area, they took three lots and turned them into two lots. So along this block, there's kind of a mixture of lot sizes. In 1951, the city established the 75-foot-wide lot requirement and the 9,000-square-foot minimum lot size requirement. So at that time, these, this lot became non-conforming. Note in your packet that the council has two recommendations to consider this evening. Staff recommended denial of the variances and preliminary plat to the planning commission. However, the planning commission reviewed that staff recommendation and recommended approval of this project. And I'll conclude my presentation by going through their findings for recommendation for approval. The primary issue that both staff and the planning commission considered are the variances, are the findings for the variances met when considering dividing this property. Staff, again, believes that they're not. The first standard, will the proposal relieve practical difficulties that prevent a reasonable use from complying with the ordinance? It was staff's belief that reasonable use exists with the property with the existing single-family home that exists today. So if the council were to deny the plat, reasonable use of the property wouldn't be denied. They would still have that with that single-family home. Again, while there are lots that are 50-foot wide along this block, there are some that are larger. Note that there's a lot across the street that's 100 feet wide. There are two lots to the north that are 75 feet wide, and there are three to the south in this area that exceed 80 feet in width. There are some circumstances with this, with these two 75-foot-wide lots. Part of the reason that these may have developed a little bit larger than the others is that there is a utility line that runs through the middle of that property. The second criteria is, are the circumstances unique to this property, not common to every similarly-zoned property, and not self-created? It was staff's belief that this is self-created in the request to subdivide the property. You'll hear the applicant argue, and the planning commission, I believe, agreed with it, that this is similar to a similar subdivision that the council approved a couple of years ago over on Oaklawn. And I'll point that out. The block that we're looking at is right here, Brookview Avenue. This is the subject property. The subdivision that was approved is in this 5900 block of Oaklawn. As you can see, every lot in this block existed prior to that subdivision as a 50-foot-wide lot. This was the only on the block that was 100 feet wide. And so we felt that there a distinction could be made between these two neighborhoods, in that the neighborhood that we're looking at this evening is a mixture of oversized lots and 50-foot-wide lots, whereas this block is all 50-foot-wide lots. The third criteria, staff believes, is met also, in that the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Again, there are 50-foot-wide lots in there, in this, on this block, and adding two more wouldn't affect that essential character. With that, staff is recommending denial of the variances and the preliminary plat, and the findings are outlined in the planning commission's staff report. The planning commission, however, is recommending approval. It was on a four-to-three vote, subject to the four findings that are outlined in the city council report. They found that the vast majority of the parcels on this block and in the neighborhood are made up of 50-foot-wide lots. The practical difficulty is caused by the applicant, is caused to the applicant by requiring a 100-foot lot and not allowing 50-foot lots, which is the character of the neighborhood. Third, the circumstances unique to the property is that the property was originally platted as two 50-foot lots, long before the applicant owned the property. In denying the application, the property owner would be denied a use of the property, 50-foot-wide lots that's common to the area. And lastly, they felt that, again, and staff would agree, that the variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. So with that, I can turn it over to the council for any questions.
Questions for Director Teague. Members Sprague?
Mr. Teague, what differences do you see between this lot subdivision and the one on Oaklawn that was approved?
The distinction that we felt is that every lot on Oaklawn, with the exception of the one that was proposed for the subdivision, was a 50-foot-wide lot, whereas the block that we're looking at this evening, it's kind of, it's a mixture. There are two 100-foot lots right across from each other. There's the two 75-foot lots to the north that, again, are oversized over the 9,000-square-foot size. There's also two lots down at the end, located here, that exceed width and area requirement. And then there's this third lot to the south here. So we felt that there is a distinction between those two blocks.
Are there any special topographical reasons or utility easement reasons to not allow for the subdivision, in your opinion?
Utility issues with the property that we're looking at?
Any easements or special topography issues that would, that would factor in?
There's not on this particular site. Now, the, the unique circumstances out there, again, was this utility easement that runs through the property to the north. And then this property to the south here, I believe there was right-of-way that was vacated and dedicated to this property, and that's the reason that that lot is somewhat oversized.
Thank you.
Other questions for Director Teague? Member Bennett?
Yes, thank you. Director Teague, what is the effect of medians in terms of lot sizes and in any kind of regulatory effect of them?
It doesn't come into play in this scenario. When medians are required, it's if the, the lots exceed 75 feet in width and 9,000 square feet in area. So at that time, we would take the, all the properties within 500 feet of a particular site, and whatever the median is for lot width, lot depth, and lot area, that becomes the minimum. But anything less than, than 75 feet or 9,000 square feet, that 75 feet is the minimum, 9,000 square feet is the minimum.
So it may be informative for us to know that the median lot size is something, but because in this instance, we're talking about property that is less than the code minimum, it doesn't enter into effect in terms of regulation or guiding it-
That's correct.
...decision. Thank you. What are the differences in the side yard setbacks required for lots of different widths?
Yeah, the, the side yard setback is, would be five feet for each of these properties.
But at 100 feet, it's at what?
It would be 10 feet.
Okay. And then there were some points brought up about the sort of affordability of homes or that, there was discussion on the planning commission about the desirability of smaller lots, among those who voted for this, talking about smaller, affordable homes for new residents. Can you tell me what the impact has been, for instance, in the subdivision that was done on Oaklawn? What were the prices of the homes that were built, and what were the sizes of those properties?
Yeah, the, the homes that were built on these two Oaklawn properties, each one of those two homes sold for over $800,000.
And I understand that there was also a home built on Brookview several years ago with the intention to subdivide the lot, and what was the price, approximate sale price or assessed value of that home?
That's correct. That home sold for a little bit over, a little higher than those two properties, but it was over $800,000 in that case as well.
Okay. Thank you. And then there also was discussion at the, before the planning commission about what the potential size of the homes on the resulting two lots were this to be, the subdivision to be approved. And there's a little bit of a discrepancy between the minutes and what's on the tape, because the, in the tape, you state that the footprint has one dimension, but the maximum square footage could be another with a two-story. Can you explain?
Oh, the, the total square footage, for example, the total square footage of the homes that we saw built on Oaklawn there, I believe, are roughly in the 3,000-square-foot range, but that's, that's taking into account the main level and the second story.
Okay.
So it was the footprint, I believe, that we were referring to. The minimum footprint for a building would be just over 2,000 square feet.
Okay. And then on the tape-
That would include the garage.
So a little over 2250, I think, is what I heard and saw in the minutes. But then you also refer to with two stories, that it could be up to 4,000 square feet, in fact, on each of the two 50-foot wide lots.
Correct.
Okay. And that would be, and then a two-car garage would, could be in addition to that, plus, is this a walkout property? Capable of a walkout basement?
I believe it does still in the back.
Okay. So that would be in addition to what's above grade at the front, correct?
Correct.
Okay. By way of information, and this is something I know you've worked on, the question of FAR, which Minneapolis used as its Regulation for Massing Floor Area Ratio, I believe that their standard is a 50 percent FAR. So with a consistent 5,000-square-foot lot, which is slightly smaller than the lot size we're talking here, their maximum is a 2,500-square-foot home on all levels.
Right. This would be approaching, if this were, if we saw two 4,000-square-foot homes built there, not including the basement, it would be way, well over 50 percent here.
Final question. Do park dedication fees apply to R1 lot subdivisions and plats?
They would be if we were creating a new lot, but these were originally platted as two lots. So in a sense, the city has already collected park dedication fees for two lots.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Teague at this point in time? Yes. Members Sprague?
Planner Teague, on that block, are there any new construction homes?
From my recollection, there was one newer home, I believe, on the west side of the street.
Kitty corner. Okay. I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Thank you. You can sit down. Mr. Herman, welcome.
Thank you.
And give us your name and address before you start, and you'll have 10 minutes.
Okay. My name is Kirby Herman, and I live at 5829 Brookview Avenue. And thank you, Mayor, and the city council. And I'd just like to begin my presentation with a little history of why I'm here tonight and what brought me here. And I know that there's been development around the Pamela Park area. I am a contractor. I was a realtor. And I took into consideration what was going on in the city and specifically around Pamela Park. I know what took place on the south end on Brookview. I know what that fiasco caused. And what I wanted to do, what I proposed, or thought even considering my application, was first and foremost, was not have what happened on the south end on Brookview, but to eliminate that and go before my neighbors, talk to them specifically, which I did and which is included in my presentation here, signatures from my neighbors, explaining exactly what I was proposing to do, got their signatures, got their approval. And then I was starting after that, and that was like in 2009. Then I was very attuned to what was going on in Oaklawn, because it's exactly the same situation that I'm proposing to do here tonight with my application. And that was passed. And then, once that was passed, I figured, I sold my, I also lived on 5836, I've lived on the block since 1996, and I put that house up for sale. I did not pursue a builder. A builder came up, bought it, and built that house that's on there today. And it's a lovely house, and it's a wonderful addition to our neighborhood, which, to be quite honest, is a little bit tired. So with that in mind, knowing that there was going to be some development in the area, I bought the property, not for the home, but for the two lots. And because of what happened on Oaklawn, I proceeded with the application. So with that in mind, I just want to continue my presentation here. I did purchase these sites for investment a few years ago, which was 2006. This real estate was planted in the 1940s as two lots, and all of, as well as all of Fairfax Edition. This site was designed to be, to be a home for two families. The home I live in is structurally obsolete. It's two bedrooms, one bath. In addition, all of my neighbors and I maintain an additional 30 feet of land area that creates the sense of a much larger lot. It's an additional 300 square feet. That's the boulevard behind my house that leads up to the entrance- That's the boulevard behind my house that leads up to the entrance into the park. I maintain that, it's mowed and it's maintained. My plat, lots 16 and 17 Fairfax, in similar fashion to 21 immediate neighboring homes, 18 or 81% of the sites are identical to my proposal in the 5800 block of Brookview. My plat is substantially similar, except for, except for walkout versus tuck under topography to the April 2009 approved Fairfax second edition replat of lots 6 and 7 Fairfax, Block 14. C attached, you all have that present, that's what I talked about before. There are now two new homes adding tax base and redevelopment inspiration to our community. Within the 500 radius, 54 homes are virtually identical to my plat for the majority of the community. My plat fronts on Brookview, just like all my neighbors. Neighbors support my application. I know that I sent out a letter to 60, 60 of the homes that are in, within that 500-foot radius, and it was brought to my attention that only one person had an objection to this subdivision. I think that speaks for itself. My plat is 100% conforming as to lot width and depth per staff report. The proposal is absolutely consistent with surrounding land use and the Edina Guide Plan. The proposal meets all requirements of the City of Edina Engineers. This plat is consistent with intended zoning for Fairfax. And the reality is, a significant proportion of East Edina consists of single-family homes on existing 50-foot lots. We need to acknowledge that many of these homes will be redeveloped in the same fashion as my request. This is a reasonable expectation. The only reason a variance is requested is due to the city ordinance for new lots is currently 75, making a 50-foot lot not conforming. So the very ordinance creates practical difficulties with compliance in East Edina for many existing 50-foot residents. And then will the proposal relieve practical difficulties that prevent a reasonable use from complying with the ordinance requirements? Reasonable is to allow a new conforming construction to occur, not a McMansion. This is, this activity will stimulate a healthy community and redevelopment inspiration for our housing stock's revitalization. This type of redevelopment is what community leadership should encourage. 80% of East Edina's narrow lots, most built in the 1940s and 50s, are currently hosting obsolete housing stock. As our community approaches 80 years old, we need the leadership to realistically and strategically send a message that it is safe to invest in Edina. The ordinance requiring a 75-foot lot width, when 80% of the plus of the homes is 50% lots, creates a practical difficulty. And then per the staff report, I wanted to make a point when they said that, you know, one house to the west, I agree, that's a, that's a 100-foot lot. It was, he bought both lots and did exactly what the previous owner had done with my lot. But the two to the south are there basically because of the storm sewer system that goes through those two lots. So it's, they can't build on it, so they gave each neighboring lot 25 feet. That's why those are 50-foot. And then on the south end, there is a, they vacated 59th Street, it doesn't go into the park anymore. They gained an additional 30 feet so that they could have access to their garage instead of what they used to have to drive behind. So, and then also, there are 10, in this neighborhood, there are 10 to the west, two to the south, and four to the north that are 50-foot lots. So the rationale is this, the applicant may have a use, some use, or the possibility of use. However, modern standards for residential dwellings are not being satisfied by the current 1941, satisfied by the current 1941 obsolete, moldy, leaky, undesirable structure. The old structure with a breezeway and a garage addition on the second lot has outlived its useful life. Two new homes are consistent with realistic vision as to the continuing revitalization of Edina. One new home on the northern lot where the home is, and one on the south lot where the garage and breezeway addition are, should be approved. And as a practical matter, when measured by any real estate professional, a single-use redevelopment of this site is not practical as an expectation of Edina's new home consumers. We need to address in a practical way the new home consumer's investment desires. Can it be affordably achieved? No rational consumer wants a 10,000-square-foot McMansion. Let's not discriminate, let's do the right thing, let's acknowledge the petition of support from all my neighbors for this plat. Let's build practical, sensible homes, not so big. We must also acknowledge that there are lots smaller than 50 feet in Edina. If these residents apply to build the same house as I plan to, they can, yet I shouldn't, that I'm, you know, and I'm not, I'm not able to do so myself. Please consider my most direct neighbors, all have 50-foot lots, all could tear down their homes and build exactly what I'm seeking to do with your permission today. The vast majority of my neighbors, neighborhood is consistent in occupancy and use with my application. And I know we got into a lot about the continuity of the neighborhood, you know, the reasonable use of this particular property, you know, what do we want? Do we want two houses or do we want one big one? Because if, if we don't allow this subdivision, we can't not allow someone to build exactly what they would want to do in a 100-foot lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Let's see if anyone has any questions for you. Questions for Mr. Herman? Member Bennett?
Good evening.
Good evening.
On what I'll call a sketch plan that was in our packet, there is the depiction of the subdivision of this lot into two 50-foot lots. And looking toward Brookview, there is a box called a garage, and it's directly on the property line. And that means that it's in the variance, it's quite close to the street, but it's directly on the property line that would separate the two 50-foot lots. And I'm confused, that can't be where you're going to put the garage.
No, they would tear down the entire house.
But I'm looking at what is a new drawing here.
Okay.
And I'm confused because I see the drawing of the old home, the existing home, on the current 100-foot lot, and then I'm looking at this one that shows the two lots, but the garage is sitting directly on?
Oh, no, that's, that's, that was Oaklawn.
Pardon me?
That was the old plat for Oaklawn. That was the property that?
Oh, okay. Excuse me. I, I thought this was, I guess I'm not sure why that was included in this, because it confused me as to how it applied to what we're doing here. Okay, thank you.
Member Bennett?
Thank you. Mr. Herman, you say that all of your neighbors signed the petition. I note that on the petition that was included in our packet, there are 11 households represented, and there are 21 households on your street, including yours. What happened to the other 10 people? Or the other 10 households?
I don't have their signatures, but there's not one that has opposed this particular subdivision.
One of your neighbors wrote in opposition, I believe.
Well, that was on, that was on Oaklawn. They lived on Oaklawn. They didn't live directly on 5800 Brookview.
Their address is not included in their correspondence.
Well, it was on Oaklawn because I, I called and asked.
So, Mr. Herman, how long, when did you buy the property that you're occupying?
2006.
Okay, and have you, understanding that you bought it to make this application, have you made any improvements to that property since 2006?
No, I haven't.
Thank you.
Mr. Herman, a question for you. You run, I'll call it the same page with the staff with respect to the standards for issuance of a variance, except with respect to the item A, will the proposal relieve practical difficulties that prevent a reasonable use from complying with the ordinance requirements? So I'd like to have you articulate a little bit more clearly for the council. I know you had a written presentation and you tried to cover it there. What are, in your mind, what are the practical difficulties that you face in complying with the code if the lot is left in its present configuration or you're not granted the ability to have two 50-foot lots?
Well, the house itself is, the practical difficulties are set by the city, not by me. All I want to do is do what my neighbors are able to do, which is build on a 50-foot lot. I just so happen to have two of them. And they were, they were planted originally as two 50-foot lots to keep in continuity with the neighbor. And as a contractor and a developer, this is what I do for a living. And because of this ordinance, and I'm unable to do that if this is not planted, or if the application is not accepted or approved.
So the practical difficulty that you face, as I understand it, would be the size of the lot prevents you from putting two houses on, subdividing it and having two houses there instead of one. Is that right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, the size of the lot is too big.
The size of the lot is a practical difficult?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We may bring you back up, but we're going to open it up for a public hearing now. Any other questions for Mr. Herman at this point in time?
Can I ask our attorney to opine on that practical difficulty? Since this is sort of a new area for us for real.
It's a new law. It's new for all of us.
And a new ordinance.
Practical difficulties, no means, it's a new term. Means that the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner. So you have to determine, is what he proposes to do, is his proposal to use the property in a reasonable manner?
Say that again.
Practical, practical, excuse me, practical difficulties means the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner. So you have to determine whether what he wants to do would be to use the property in a reasonable manner. And the plight of the owner is caused by the zoning ordinance and not by circumstances, is not created by the landowner, and it's created by something that's unique to the That's the basic standard. Does he want, one, does he, what the applicant wants to do is reasonable? Two, is the need for it caused by his own action? Three, is there something unique about the property?
Okay. Let me ask Director Teague a question. If we, if the request were denied tonight, how large a home could be built on a 100-foot lot over there?
He would be, they would be allowed a, they would have to meet all the required setbacks, and the footprint or the buildable area can't exceed 30% of the lot area. So if it's, oh, I can do some quick math to determine what that footprint would be. 12,000-square-foot lot at 30%.
4,000 square feet per floor?
Per floor.
For the larger lot, however, the lot coverage is 25%, correct?
You're right. It is 25%. Thank you.
So now we're down to 3,000 square feet per floor?
6,000 square foot.
Yeah, you can build a 6,000-square-foot house there. Okay. All right, thank you. I'm going to open this as a public hearing. If there's anyone who is interested in coming forward and commenting on this matter, please, please feel free to do so. If you, if you have anything you want to use from an overhead standpoint, you can stand in the middle. Otherwise, I would suggest going to the side podium, give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. And when the yellow light comes on, you'll have 30 seconds to kind of wrap up.
Thank you so much. I'm Leslie Ann Sullivan at 5845 Brookview Avenue here in Edina. I've lived here for a couple of decades, have been a school principal here, and have really enjoyed living in East Edina. But I do see the fact that some of the housing on our block and nearby areas is starting to deteriorate, and I was real frankly very pleased when the new homes went up on Oaklawn. It revitalized the area, it got people to, looking forward to improving their properties. And when I got wind of the fact that Kirby Herman was looking at his 100-foot lot and doing something with it, it made me nervous. I was really concerned about a very large house going in on my block. I happen to live in one of those oversized lots down on 59th Street in Brookview. I gained an extra 25 feet or so when 59th Street was discontinued as a through street. Two other properties at the end of that block also are in that same situation. So they're really on the Brookview side is only one other lot that's oversized, a 100-foot lot. And I've spoken with many of the neighbors, we really support what Kirby is doing and putting in, we hope, two family-size homes that we can be proud to have on our block and that will revitalize Brookview Avenue. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Leslie.
Thank you. My name is Tom Hurley. I'm at 5837 Brookview, the immediate neighbor to Kirby, Mr. Herman. And I too am in support of the, of what his proposal is. And I would submit that the, the reasonable thing that the city attorney was talking about, you know, what would be unreasonable would be to build a McMansion on that property, which I fully intend, if he doesn't, somebody else would, he would likely sell that property. It's, you know, the house is, is in need of repair, let's say, and then some. It's just not conducive to a family-style home. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Hurley. Anyone else? Don't see anyone coming forward. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move second.
Move in second if we close the public, public hearing, discussion. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye. Aye. Close, say nay. Carried. Discussion. Someone want to lead it off, or do you want to do a motion and see if we get a second and then have discussion? What's, what's the preference?
Let's make a motion so we can discuss it.
All right.
I'm going to move approval of a slot subdivision. And I think that the explanation of two 50-foot lots is a use as a reasonable manner, looking at the 50-foot lots. You know, it's odd because I voted against the Oaklawn one, and I voted against it because it had different topography. I didn't think it was going to.
Second.
Yes, thank you. Are you my second?
No.
Did you need a?
Josh is.
I just wanted to clarify that we needed a second before we discuss it.
Yeah, thanks. Oaklawn had different topography between the two lots, I didn't think it would work. I guess I'm going to stand corrected, I've looked at the houses there, I walk that neighborhood all the time. That little red fox lives in your neighborhood that was just in the pictures, he also comes over to Concord and eats my bunnies, I'm kind of happy with him right now. Not for my bunnies, but for my flowers. I think this, this will work in this neighborhood. I think using the house to the south that you live in, let's say, that benefited from an easement and a road that didn't go through, and then a sewer line that goes, a utility that goes through the other two. The only one really that, to me, is different is the one across the street. And so I guess this time I'm going to support this.
All right, thank you. Member Sprague?
Yeah, I second it as well. It's not going to alter the essential character of the neighborhood. In fact, it's going to enhance the character of the neighborhood and restoring it to the original plat intention. The massing task force took care of sliding setbacks according to lot size, and I think that a lot of thought went into that, and that would, we don't have FAR here, but we do have a pretty sensible plan for not allowing houses to mass on small lots. So the benefit here is that we get two smaller houses, and we don't get that massive house that the people find so abhorrent. I think roughly the house would be max 3,000 square feet above grade. The one on Oaklawn is for sale, one of the two houses that was built, and that's 3,960 total square footage above and below. And we have to allow for the revitalization of our neighborhoods. We don't want to be static and stagnant, we want to allow for, for our areas to continue to meet the new housing needs of people coming in. The affordable housing argument to me is a red herring. These are not going to be affordable housing. The one on Oaklawn is listed for 909,000, the other one across the street sold for 800-something. And so that, that argument's not compelling for me, but the revitalization of the neighborhood and the return to the 50-foot lot, to me, is reasonable, and that's why I supported the motion.
Thank you. Member Bennett?
Thank you. Looking at, I mean, these are not big lots, 50 by 134, they're little lots. So from that standpoint, the, the houses are going to, I, you know, on the one hand, I appreciate where we are in hand, I, I appreciate where we are in the, in, in the process of this, and I would love to know what's gonna go there and how it's gonna sit, in order to know that two fifty-foot lots with, hopefully not identical houses, but similar houses, uh, would enhance the neighborhood, would, um, enhance each other, stay within the easements, and, um, and be something that enhances the houses on either side of them. So I, I think that when you see revitalization, whether it is landscaping or whatever it is, all of a sudden you see the neighbors take a little bit of pride in what, how they reflect what's going on in that, in that new, um, new improvement. This was, uh, believe it or not, this was a hard decision for me. It's, it is because on the books we have a seventy-five-foot limit for our smallest lot width, lot width. And, uh, and so from that standpoint, all right, do I, do I set that aside because this neighborhood is a mixture of fifty and seventy-five foot and eighty foot and a hundred foot? Or do I say, gee, there are other hundred-foot lots in this neighborhood, and why can't we just leave this one at a hundred? So I could see it both ways. Will two houses on two fifty-foot lots detract from this neighborhood? No, they won't. The way that they will is if you push your easements, if you push it forward, if you push it sideways, if you push it back, if you balance the size of the house with the size of the green space, uh, which, I mean, you know what you're doing. I personally don't have to know what you're doing, but I need to be able to make a decision that tells you how I feel about what you're doing. And so I'm gonna trust that since you know what happened, uh, south of you on Brookview, that you know what makes our skin crawl up here. And we don't wanna go there again, we never wanna go there again. It was one of my first decisions as a council member, and I hope I never have to feel that way again. So I am in support of this, I think it will, as you say, revitalize the neighborhood. Will you go down this street and say, oh my God, what happened there? I don't think you will, because, uh, because there are other houses that fit nicely on their fifty-foot lots. So I don't think this will stand out in that way. Height-wise, we've got mechanisms in place that tell you how tall it can be. There are methods by which you can increase your ceiling height by lowering the basement, if you'd like, in order to not increase the height of the house, but yet keep your, um, eight-to-nine-foot-high ceilings, if that is something you desire to do. So there are mechanisms that are in place that help this to fit into the existing neighborhood. And I can't, um, I can't emphasize enough that I, as a council member, do not wanna drive down that street and go, oh, I wish we hadn't done that. So it's, uh, it's, I, as, as you can imagine, I've thought around this thing, and so, but I am in support of it.
Thank you. Member Bennett?
I voted against the Oaklawn subdivision, and will vote against this one for the same reasons. First of all, I think we had a very clear staff report, and I appreciate it. Staff's recommenda, staff's, uh, statements were that the proposal does not meet the required standards and ordinances for a subdivision, because the proposed lots do not meet the zoning ordinance requirements. The two proposed lots do not meet the minimum lot area or lot width requirements. The proposed lots do not meet the median lot width in the area. The proposal does not meet the required standards for a variance. Reasonable use of the property exists today. The applicant would not be denied reasonable use of the property. Can rebuild, doesn't have to rebuild a, a bigger house, could rebuild a house of the same size that probably will go on one of the lots or larger. Practical difficulty is self-created by the applicant's proposal to subdivide. Proposed lots, again, do not meet median lot area for lots in this neighborhood. And finally, existing lot is similar in size to several oversized lots to the southwest and north. There was a lot of discussion at the Planning Commission about neighborhood character, and I think lot width is one of the features of neighborhood character. Housing style is another feature of neighborhood character, and this is a neighborhood that has a wide variety in lot widths, um, less in lot depth than some of our other neighborhoods. But a lot of variety in lot widths, a lot of variety in housing styles. Yes, it hasn't had some of the rebuilding that's occurred in other neighborhoods, but one of the things that we know from the school district is how desirable enrollment is here, how we are attracting young families. We know from our survey that there's an identified need for starter homes for young families. As, uh, Member Sprague has acknowledged, eight-hundred-thousand dollars or so is not a starter home price for most families. And what I have stated before is I fear that through, through incentives and disincentives, we actually make our relatively affordable neighborhoods disappear. And, and perhaps that was, is what will start to happen to this one. The applicant has cited the Oaklawn subdivision as a basis to make this decision. When we make a decision, we are careful to say it doesn't create precedent, but obviously in the minds of this applicant and in the minds of members of the Planning Commission, it did create a precedent. So I, um, I understand good intentions, I understand he has, he has the support of some of his neighbors, but, um, I can't support the proposal.
Thank you. When I listened to the city attorney cites the standards for issuance of the variance and then listened to the testimony, I, I felt that there was a basis for the, for the granting of this matter. Property as proposed for subdivision will be a reasonable use of the property. There are practical difficulties in my mind complying with the code in its present formation. Uh, the circumstances in my mind weren't created by the landowner, and, uh, a, and there will be, uh, I believe, no alteration of the essential character of the neighborhood by virtue of this variance being granted and two lots being created in the place of one. The biggest danger I see here is that you end up with a, a big house in, in a neighborhood of smaller homes. And, and I think that is a practical, and even, indeed a real concern, as builders look around, uh, our city, uh, and they come across a lot that's a hundred-foot lot, they will build something appropriate to, uh, that lot, and it will not, if that happens over there, it will not fit the character of the neighborhood. I know some of the folks that, that live, uh, you know, a block or so away from you, the Amundsons, that told me that they really appreciate having those new homes, uh, in the neighborhood, just as Leslie said, that she appreciated having those new homes in the neighborhood. Uh, we're, our, our town is, in some areas, reinventing itself, and I think that's healthy, that, uh, regenerating our town and making it a place that people wanna live. You can see what's happened over on, on Halifax, uh, south of Luns. It's, it's basically reinvented itself. Some people don't like it, but it's, it's, the market's speaking to us, and if you're gonna have people moving in here with families, you gotta provide the kinda places to live that they wanna live in. And, and that's what'll happen with two, uh, homes on, uh, on fifty-foot lots. So, uh, I'm in favor of it, and, um, I think we will, uh, it was, is there any further discussion, folks? Okay.
Mayor, I, I would, uh, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, it, one of the Planning Commissioners in particular, there was a discussion about the fact that we don't, we've now had these applications, and what are the principles that we're going to use, um, to be making these decisions? If we've had the seventy-five-foot width standards since nineteen-fifty-one, and we have, that's a citywide standard, it's not unique to this area or this block. So what I am suggesting is that this is something we consider sooner rather than later, work with our Planning Commission and decide just what do we mean by minimum lot width, and what are we going to do with these applications? Because I do think that we are going to see more.
I don't think there's anything wrong with our standards as they, as they exist at present. I think that we are going to run into these anomalous situations where, uh, you had a situation in this case where there were two lots, where one exists now, and, uh, and we'll have to deal with them on a one-off basis, and so will the Planning Commission. Member Sprague?
Agreed, Mayor. Uh, there's no s- standard that can fit the city, there are just so many different plats and subdivisions throughout the city, and so many lot, uh, lot widths, and, and there's just so much variety. That's one of the, the good things about the city, but it does make enforcement of a single standard difficult. Whether or not this lot is subdivided, the markets will dictate a higher-priced home. Whether you believe it, we do nothing, it's gonna be, you know, a larger house, it'll, you know, priced per square foot, you have a higher square-footage house, it'll be a million-two instead of eight-hundred. So either way, we're not getting affordable housing. I just, I don't, I don't think that that argument enters into this decision. This is more about, um, the, to me, the important prong of the tre, of the test is, does it alter the essential character of the neighborhood? And I think that's the, um, the safety net we have in coming up on, on other decisions that may involve lot splits. Uh, when I look back on this, on this plat again, uh, this, this actually restores, in some ways, the essential character of this particular segment. And that might be completely different in another part of town. So I think that the standard is built in to, to give that protection.
Thank you. I like the notion of two families being able to enjoy the proximity to the park rather than one in a great big house, so that's just a little bit of an aside. I think we do have standards here, I mean, that's why we have this new ordinance with respective variances and the standards that apply, and we individually interpret them in different ways, but, um, it seems like we've got, uh, we had a full vetting of this matter, so let's have a vote. All those in favor of approving the preliminary plat with lot width and lot area variances at fifty-eight twenty-nine Brookview Avenue, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Carried. Uh, resolution two thousand eleven dash seventy-nine is approved. All right, we are at the, uh, community comment portion of the agenda. And, um, is there anyone here that wishes to speak to a matter that is not, uh, on the agenda this evening?
I would, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize for my voice being a little rocky tonight.
Mr. Rich, welcome.
Ronald Rich, seven zero zero eight West Shore Drive. I'm here to comment on the work on Seventieth Street and how it is not conforming to what citizens, or I believe even you understood was the original plan. We've worked on this process for a number of years, many citizens groups were involved, an agreement was forged that we didn't really like, but we accepted as long, with the primary goal that the width of the road would not exceed the current width of the road. We compromised badly with an eleven-foot lane and left-turn signals that the engineers from the city and the city staff wanted to have. They were gonna take thirty to forty feet, a little extra, on either and, and near the interchanges, so take that away from the neighborhood, make it a little bit different, but the remains, the bulk of the street would remain at forty feet. That is not what's being built. What's being built is a forty-three-foot-wide road, which increases the capacity potentially in the future of the road beyond what we had now. It's not being built to the spec that we agreed to. I'm not sure whether or not something occurred in my absence where you approved such a thing, but if you did, the citizens were not informed and had no concept that this was occurring. This was one of the primary issues the citizens of the community, Cornelia neighborhood, did not want to have happen, a wider road. That's why there was so much objection originally, because the original plans called for a wider road. We don't understand why this is going on now, but we do understand that it is going on now. At this point, because we were uninformed, and at a request for more information, we were sent a plat that still shows a forty-foot width. It's not being built to a forty-foot width. Something is terribly wrong, the neighbors are very upset. At this point, we would like construction to stop until this is resolved. This is unfair, it has nothing to do with the citizen input process, it violates the citizen input process, it essentially negates everything that we wanted to do as a neighborhood. This road could be turned into a thirty-five or a forty-foot, or, or thirty, thirty-five or a forty mile-an-hour road, because it's going wider. The lanes could be made wider simply by repainting them. The bike lanes could be taken out, not what we intended. I don't know how to further go through the detail. I do know that we're also seeing things like semi-fours, the traffic lights on West Shore Drive have overhangs that are not on Cornelia, it's a standard-size interchange. It was supposed to be a small, neighborhood-friendly traffic light. These are all things that we agreed to, and we accepted not being carried out. We are being given a wide road, a potentially high-speed road, and we have no idea why this was not approved or brought to the citizenry. My time is up, so I'll stop. But we're very upset.
Okay, thanks for coming, we'll do some, uh, investigating here.
Thank you.
Standby, I think. We'll probably, well, I think what we'll do is refer it to staff, I don't know if staff's prepared to comment on this tonight or not, I, tonight or not, I, I don't, pardon me?
Council comments.
All right, okay. All right, um, anybody else for a community comment? All right, see no one coming forward. Uh, next matter on the agenda is the resolution, um, two thousand eleven dash eighty, accepting various donations. Move in second, did we adopt resolution two thousand eleven dash eighty? Uh, discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, say nay? Carried. Uh, donations this reporting period are to the Edina Arts Center, the names of the donors will be posted, um, in due course on the city's website. Next matter, Manager Neal, is a discussion about the PACE Energy Efficiency Project financing.
Thank you, Your Honor. At our last council meeting, I, I gave you a, a preview that this item would be on your agenda for tonight. Uh, we've had a chance to, uh, look at this new program, uh, briefly with our, with our EEC, but also with staff and, and also city attorney. Uh, what we are asking, uh, for tonight is for the council to formally, uh, direct staff to work under the guidance of the EEC to put together, uh, a PACE program. Um, it's not quite as simple as just, uh, adopting a resolution, we have to adopt a program that complies with the eleven program requirements that are, uh, required under, under Minnesota statutes. And when you look at those program requirements, there's a fair amount of discretion within them. Uh, it's an item, I think, that's really is best taken up by the, the commission to put together a recommendation that would bring back to you and, and set up a program. It is a unique program, we're not aware of, um, of a PACE program in any other city in Minnesota, I don't know if anybody else is, but, um, we think it is something that, uh, is worthy of our, worthy of our community, and we'd like to get your support on it.
All right. Questions for Manager Neal? Member Brindle?
Thank you. What's the origin of the PACE program, since I've not heard of it before you mentioned it at our last meeting?
The origin of the program is, is, is a way to stimulate, uh, energy conservation programs by providing an alternative funding vehicle for them, which would allow property owners to, uh, have the program, have the, the energy conservation project completed, and then to have it assessed, the cost of that assessed back to them as a special assessment. Uh, as you might know, um, cities don't normally do private improvements on private property and then special assess them. This is a, a program that, uh, allows that to legally be done.
So it could be used for residential or business?
I believe that's...
I didn't see, I didn't see it specifically, but maybe I missed it.
Member Brindle, the, uh, at least one of the authors of the legislation, uh, from the state legislature, former member of the state legislature is in our audience, if you'd like to have him come forward. Senator, former Senator John Dahl, who's...
Oh, okay.
Who could answer this question, I think.
That would be great, thank you.
Council members, I'm John Dahl, I was, uh, in the state legislature last year, and I, uh, did, I was the chief author of the, the legislation in the Senate. The origin, uh, the administrator did explain that pretty well, but the origin, where it come from actually in the country, in the, the kinda west coast region, developed the program because of the need to reach into our buildings nowadays and get in some deeper retrofits and, for energy improvements, but not having access to capital to do that. Finding a way to take the energy, the dollars that we're already spending, and then if we can save those energy dollars, repurposing those back to pay for the installation itself, the improvement. And by tying it to the property rather than the property owner... And by tying it to the property rather than the property owner, so that you can get the, that extended length of term that oftentimes is necessary, and also get around the fact that a lot of times people are moving before that timeframe comes up, especially in the commercial part of, uh, uh, the, the community. It does, uh, cover residential and the commercial industrial sector. We believe it actually has, uh, the greatest potential in the commercial sector, but it's, it's, uh, definitely for both the residential and the commercial side of things.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Well, just, just one more. Is there a limit, a dollar limit? Or, I mean, I suppose that is going to come out of really the study of this and, and, but I'm just curious, what, what's...
I, I think that would be one of the subjects that, uh, we would want the EEC to opine on for you.
Council member, I, I could address that too. Again, as was mentioned, there's a lot of discretion that's in here. So the idea was to set up, uh, a statute that, uh, went along best practices that are currently, uh, in, in play, as well as from the Department of Energy and federal level on how to set these up, so we can have due diligence and things. We're not going to be working, getting a lot of folks that are getting into hot water financially because they can't afford that energy improvement. So there's a lot of due diligence on the financial side of things. Also, we did put in there that there's a, a cap as to how much could be borrowed based on what the equity of the property is. People have to be current with their, their finances. They can't be arrears with taxes. They have an energy audit that's included. There's a lot, so there's measurement and verification that goes along with this as well. So because the financing is going to hinge upon what those savings that we're predicting and then having a, the ability to actually guarantee that that's going to happen. So it, those, those precautions and, and concerns have been addressed and they're, they are in the statute.
Members, thank you.
In some of these models, they have the utility companies paying for part of the installation upfront with the savings generated. Is that, is that in this model or is that something else?
In this, when you say this model...
In the...
Statue?
Yeah, in the statute.
Uh, that's not delineated in the, the statute as far as who would pay, you know, what portion of it. Again, that's the flexibility and so each municipality can come up and set their criteria as to what would qualify for a PACE financing program within their jurisdiction. You can, you know, limit the number of properties. You can cap it where you want, up to, you know, up to, you know, up to ten percent. Uh, you can, uh, you know, decide what contractors are involved, you know, what financing options are available. You know, those are the things that you would design in your program. Um, in this particular case, which is really, uh, what makes us unique and, and special at this point, A, would be the first city in Minnesota, though there's, uh, cities across the country that are doing it and have been doing it, uh, is that we have a project that's already ready to roll with this, this program. And that's, that's a lot of times the, the stepping stone or the stumbling block is getting the financing partner and the community linked up, and we have that in place right now. So, uh, with a, with a program that can be presented to the council, uh, they can move forward with that project too, if it, it meets your criteria.
Okay, so this is just the enabling legislation and then the municipality can determine their own local variety of the program?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Which is what I have more questions about. So maybe if, uh, we have some other members in the audience from the, no? Different, different deal. Okay, never mind. Thank you.
Do have a work session coming up in September with the Energy and Environment Commission, correct? So this is one of the items that we could discuss depending on what they're ready to report at that time. Great, thank you.
Good evening. I've spoken at the, uh, previous council, um, session. My name is Lynn Hinkle. Uh, I worked with Senator Dahl to draft and, um, help pass the legislation in the 2010 legislative session. I just wanted to compliment, uh, staff on its recognition of another, um, possible, um, mechanism, um, not just the bonding mechanism that's called out under two sixteen C, point four thirty-six, um, but as you clearly state, um, there's another method which would allow private, uh, third-party financing, um, that would have no, um, public financing aspect or financial liability for the city. So it provides, um, uh, flexibility in the implementation of this program and I, I, again, want to compliment the city and, uh, the staff for understanding that, um, it could be, uh, a number of different mechanisms that are employed to help escalate, help to install energy improvements that include energy efficiency, renewable energy installations. I just wanted to highlight that last point, that one of the reasons that this has been moved forward is that we have, um, a property owner in Adana, uh, Rick Murphy at Grandview Tyron Auto, that, um, is very interested in using, uh, private financing, uh, and attaching the repayment of that financing for a solar array on, um, the business roof, um, to their property taxes. And again, I think staff's recognition of that opportunity and the opportunity for Adana to move forward to implement not just the bonding aspect of this, uh, which I think, uh, Senator Dahl spoke to, um, you know, very thoroughly, but the private finance aspect is, I think, a huge opportunity for the city and there may be some opportunities with going forward right now. Thank you.
Mr. Hinkle, one thing you just said made me push my button and want to ask another question. And that is referencing Grandview Tyron Auto using private funding and then basically certifying that amount of the loan to their property tax. So that, that's a piece of it that was, that when Rick Murphy was here last time, I went, well, how would this work? But you've just hit on it for me and the light bulb just went on, that indeed this is not city bond money. This is private financing that, now, correct me if I'm wrong, because this is what I understand to be private financing. Um, yep.
What we would be doing here this evening is basically enabling staff and the Energy and Environment Commission to come up with a plan for us. Maybe encompass something like you're talking about, so...
I, I guess I get, I get stuck in the...
Don't get the cart before the horse.
Stuck in the details of a definition is what, is what I, is what I was doing, so...
I think staff has done a good job presenting that option for consideration.
Member Swenson.
...staff under the guidance of the Energy and Environment Commission to prepare a PACE program that will require, go along with these requirements in the statute.
Second. All right, further discussion?
Nope.
Comment? Okay. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose say nay. Carried. All right, we, uh, have added to our agenda the, uh, solar panel project and, um, I think Jesse, is Jesse here?
Um, he is not. I'm handling that.
You're going to handle this matter?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Manager Neal, um, I think last meeting you said that, uh, we did not meet the requirements of state law in, in terms of a return on investment or payback under our, uh, performance, uh, uh, criteria, performance-based contract, and it was rebid, relet, rebid, and I understand you have some encouraging news for us.
Uh, I do. Thank you, Your Honor. Um, at, at our last council meeting, I gave you an update on the solar, uh, project. And if you'll recall, uh, when this project was originally, uh, brought to you, uh, there was, uh, an estimated cost of two hundred and four thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars for, for the project, and there was a grant of eighty-two thousand and rebates of forty-four thousand, and there was a net remaining cost of, of seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. And that's, uh, when the council reviewed that, uh, proposal, uh, you gave us the direction for staff to, to go forward and to, uh, procure the necessary engineering services to, to make it happen and to, uh, bid it, et cetera. Uh, we did that. We worked with McKinstry and Associates. Greg Akerson is here tonight and I believe has a brief presentation here shortly, so I won't, uh, give that too much preamble. Uh, but we did get back, uh, a series of, of bids when we originally took this project out that, uh, was discouraging. Uh, it produced some, some costs that were higher than we expected, produced, uh, simple payback periods that were higher, uh, than what we thought our city attorney would bless and, and certainly is higher than, uh, what our EEC, uh, supported as a group. Um, after the, after the, uh, initial period, uh, we did have some interest from, uh, the solar community in rebidding the project. We did, uh, we got back significantly better bids, and I think I'll, I'll ask Mr., um, Akerson if he can, uh, come up and maybe provide a little bit more information about that process. Mr. Akerson?
Thank you. Uh, yeah, give him a handheld.
He does.
So I can talk a little...
Could you give us your name and address, please, and your affiliation?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm Greg Akerson. I'm with McKinstry, uh, and my address is, uh, two zero seven six one Gladiola Street up in Oak Grove, so a little bit north of here. Um, and I think it might help if I go back and just give a little context here, and then I'll get into the details that, that, um, City Administrator Scott Neal has asked for, but, um, I don't want to take up much of your time tonight, but I thought it might be helpful if at least I gave you just a little bit of background and, first of all, who the heck, um, I am and McKinstry is, um, and then a little bit about the process and the identified improvements we did, and then the potential project. Um, this is some very quick facts about us, again, just to show you who we are, but we're about a fifty-year-old company. We're headquartered in Seattle's. Uh, we have been in the Midwest here for about four and a half years or so. Um, lots of employees, lots of, uh, different, you know, engineering professionals and so on, and, but the bottom line is, we really act as a consultant with our clients, so we don't have any products to sell. Um, here's a list of some of the people we've worked with recently in the last four and a half years, so it's, this is a partial list. It's something that we're kind of proud of because, again, having only been in Minnesota for somewhat of a short time, uh, we've got, uh, a lot of different references. So again, that, that speaks, uh, to us at least of, that we're doing something right. The process that we're using, and, um, Scott alluded to this a little bit, is that what we're doing is taking the savings ultimately and funding then a number of improvements, solar PV being one of them, some lighting improvements. Um, what we're trying to show is that we're going to repurpose dollars that are being sent to the utility company and reinvest those back into the facilities, similar to what we just talked about with the PACE. Um, this though is on the municipal scale. So this project that I'll present to you here in a second, actually, if approved, will have a positive change to the city's budget. It will drive excess revenue, um, so there'll be a, a little bit of a positive impact to taxpayers and the cost of the savings are guaranteed. So now, uh, what is this project? So the first part, and Scott's already mentioned this, there, it's a solar PV array, um, that staff has said to go on the city hall. So the city had obtained a grant, uh, through the EEC and their hard work, of about eighty-two thousand dollars or forty percent of the system cost. We got involved and we evaluated three different technologies from solar panels. Um, the best solution then, uh, for a number of reasons, both technologically as well as the grants or rebates that are available, ended up being ten K Solar. They're a Minnesota-based company. Um, and because of that, they're eligible for some other grants and rewards that other manufacturers are not. Um, we got some additional rebates then again, partly because of ten K Solar. The net result, you know, as Scott alluded to, is if you decide to move forward, there's no out-of-pocket cost to the city for the solar. So forty percent of the cost of the panels will be funded by the grant that the EC got. Sixty percent of the cost of the panels will be funded by Excel Energy through Solar Rewards and Made in Minnesota rebates. Um, so that was very, very good news. Associated with that, um, as long as we're looking at renewable energies, we also think that it's pertinent to wring the towel out and do a little conservation because now your renewable component goes a lot further if you're more efficient in how you're using energy. So we took a look at some interior lighting, um, and that's really upgrading some fixtures, um, relamping, a little bit of sensors and controls. And then the other two initiatives that we looked at was building envelope. And what that is, is, is in most buildings, especially where the roof to walls meet, um, there's cracks, linear feet of cracks there, um, that we go around and we seal, we seal the doors and windows. The intent there is just to keep the indoor air in and keep the outdoor air out. Um, so it's just sealing up that building envelope. And then the water conservation was the last one, and that's just really retuning existing China. So it's retuning fixtures, um, both, uh, hot water and cold water fixtures, as well as, um, plumbing fixtures. Um, in, in essence, you know, we end up getting some pretty good water savings with that, as well as some gas savings, because if we reduce the amount of hot water being used, obviously we don't have to heat as much. So, now, the data. So the project then, you know, as it sits, is there's building envelope, um, across the municipal buildings with a cost of about a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars and a payback of about eight point three years. The solar PV then has a two hundred thousand dollar cost now, after the costs have come down, with the incentives, the rebates equaling that, um, leaving a net cost to the city of zero. Um, the simple payback, there's listed at zero, but that's, I just couldn't figure out how to do an, an infinite sign, because obviously the payback is obviously infinite. Um, water conservation then, there's about thirty thousand dollars worth of work with about eight-year payback again. And then the interior lighting across the municipal facilities is about three hundred thousand dollars worth of work, again, with about a seven-year payback. So the bottom line then is the project as a whole, if approved, is almost seven hundred thousand dollars worth of improvements, about fifty-five thousand dollars annually in utility savings, um, so almost three hundred thousand dollars in incentives, with a net cost to the city of about four hundred thousand dollars, again, with a simple payback of about seven and a half years. The next slide shows the cash flow. So we modeled, I worked with staff to kind of model a quick ten-year financing term, about three point seven interest rate, so those things can change a little bit. But this just shows one sample financing model to say if the project is approved, right from year one, you'd be generating positive cash flow back to the taxpayers. Um, it's showing at the end of year ten then, that debt service would be paid off, and that all of the savings then would be accrued directly to the city. Um, as a quick summary, the benefits then, um, are from a fiscal perspective, it provides positive cash flow to the city, uh, provides, uh, almost seven hundred thousand dollars in local stimulus, uh, by having that work accomplished within the community. From an environmental stewardship perspective, it decreases the city's carbon footprint, um, equivalent to a hundred and forty-eight cars off of the road. The electrical equivalent is basically removing about seventy average, Minnesota's average-sized houses from the grid. So about sixty-seven would be taken off the grid from the conservation we're doing, um, within the municipal buildings, and about three would be provided from the solar PV on an annual basis. And then the last one is, it would provide a kind of a neat demonstration project, uh, for the city about renewables, about efficiency and those kinds of things. So with that, I feel like I, uh, was feeding your information out of a fire hose, so I apologize. Any questions?
Very succinct and, uh, highly informative. Uh, questions?
No.
For Mr. Akerson? Anyone? Member Sprague?
I just have a quick question. This is off topic, but since you put the, can you talk more about the lighting?
Yeah.
That was in the, I know we're not voting on that tonight, but since you, you had that slide up, I'd like to hear a little more about, about that.
The lighting, if I can go back to it, um, is a couple different things. In, a lot of your buildings are ready. You've got T-eight thirty-two watt lights, so you've got pretty efficient lights. Um, there's some newer technology out there to take it from thirty-two watt. Um, these aren't of that instance, but it's the long fluorescent tubes to move down to twenty-five and twenty-eight watts, um, as well as in the ice arena, you've got metal halides in one of the ratings, um, and we'd be putting that into high, uh, high-performance T-five fluorescent lights that would produce, uh, oh, sorry, that would consume a lot less electricity and provide a much better lighting quality over the ice sheet as well.
Is there any LED in that proposal?
Um, there is a, no, I'm sorry. In this one, this is all interior. Um, one of the things that we talked about with staff was that this was, could potentially be kind of a pilot project. There's other things, um, that we've identified in doing some of our audits, um, such as exterior LED, uh, both wall packs, uh, from parking lot lights and from ballards and pathway lighting that are a potential efficiency measure, um, as well as even interior lighting at Edinburgh Park, there's a potential, but you've got a lot of plants in there, so we're trying to get a hold of some horticulturists from the University of Minnesota to say, is there more efficient lighting in Edinburgh that won't have a impact on the plants, um, to be able to make sure that we don't lose that asset for you guys? So there's, there's other things, absolutely there would be potentials that are outside of this current kind of bucket.
I saw a proposal, um, a while back from Jerman and Patrulini on the EEC that showed some parking lot, uh, light changes for, I think it was Jerry's, but it was a one-year payback. That's why I'm so curious, because it seems like the lighting has the quickest return and something we should jump on immediately if, with that kind of type of payback.
Yeah, we haven't, we did, in the city of Eden Prairie, I think we did around, uh, we did right around four hundred exterior LED lights, if I remember correctly, um, throughout their municipality. And the payback there, by the time we actually got the real numbers, rebates everywhere else, was around a fourteen or fifteen-year payback. That's more typically what we see. Um, there's oftentimes, again, part of the role that we play is really as that consultant, so we don't have any products to sell. so we don't have any products to sell. So oftentimes, we kind of are the bad guys, because vendors will come in and claim things, and then we come in with the numbers, and they aren't necessarily matching up with what some of the claims people hear in the industry. So I'd be surprised if there was an LED light that had a one-year payback, but I couldn't say that there isn't one. Correct. Absolutely. And the burn hours, a whole number of factors, absolutely.
Okay, that's all I have. Thanks.
I have a question. Thank you. Now, looking at the item that we tabled last time, it says this grant would require a city match of about $18,000. And that being something that we put aside for more information, what's the difference between that recommendation and this one? Where is the city responsible for putting any dollars in?
No. Under, what happened, and Scott alluded to this just a little bit, is that we went out and rebid all of the pricing. We got some additional bidders in, and the prices came significantly down. With the numbers coming down, and I asked about three of the contractors, why their numbers came in so much better the second time, and I got three different answers, one from each one, so I stopped asking the question. But nonetheless, because I was happy with the results, with the numbers coming down as low as they did, the way the rebates and grants structure out is, you've got a cap of 60% under the Solar Rewards and Made in Minnesota, and 40% for the grant. If you're over, the magic number is right around 205,000 that would maximize the grant and the other incentives. If you're over that, the amount over that 205-ish number would be a city contribution out of their pocket. Because you're under that, those two grants, one thing that happens is, your grant was up to 82,000, but that 40% cap, you're down now to about 80,000, but it becomes somewhat of a moot point, because the city's out-of-pocket goes to zero. So it was great, great news.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure and clarify that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Somebody have questions for someone else? All right, yeah, I thought I'd bring them up, so, okay.
Actually, let me go back just one second, if I may, Mayor Council, is that those incentives, and this is just an important point, but the incentives on the solar do equal up to 100% of the cost. There's no city out-of-pocket. However, of that 60% match through Solar Rewards and Made in Minnesota, about half of that is paid out over a five-year period. So there's no out-of-pocket over five years. However, there is a cash flow there that the city must pick up a little bit, just due to the rebate structure through Excel Energy. But in, there is truly a net zero out-of-pocket, however, there is a cash flow associated with that, just to be clear.
So the city will be responsible to pay something? Some front money? And that's what I want to clarify, because we're talking about zero here, but that's the end result is zero. It's not that this doesn't, this has to be budgeted.
Correct. It's zero dollars over five years. And of that, I'm going to go, of the $200,000, roughly about $75,000 is paid out, a little less than that, about $60,000 paid out over five years. So there would be some cash contribution that would be required to get you back to that zero-end date in five years from now. Does that make sense?
It does, and that's what I want to know, is what has to come out of here in order for this to happen?
Yep.
Member Swenson.
If my memory is correct, we budgeted somewhere between 75 or 80, so I think we have the amount in our budget currently to then get rebated back.
All right. Other questions for Mr. Ackerson? Otherwise, I'm going to ask Chair Latham to come up, or any other members of the, oh, Surya Iyer, Commissioner Iyer, come up for your comments. This is Commissioner Surya Iyer from the Energy and Environment Commission. Commissioner, would you give us your home address, too, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Your Honors. My name is Surya Iyer. I live at 6621 South Crest Drive.
Thank you.
So, while the PowerPoint is being pulled up, I just wanted to thank staff and the consultant for working on this project and bringing down the cost from the vendors, so this has become a more viable project. Just to give a background of what the Energy and Environment Commission, the role in this, of course, we wrote the project as part of the Energy Working Group. A few members of that working group are here, actually, today, and which was approved. We approved it to go to Energy and Environment Commission, where it was approved to be submitted, and we were fortunate to get the grant. And I think, as you know, the last time, we did have two votes on this project. The last time was, moved it down. This time, at the last EEC meeting, we approved the project, and because of the better financial terms and also the better understanding of the overall impact of doing a renewable energy project for the city. So, I don't want to take too much time of the city and your, so I want to just quickly go through the advantages that I see and the Energy and Environment Commission sees. This is a small but active step towards lowering carbon footprint of this city building. There's, of course, the opportunity for tremendous cost savings. This is, you know, anywhere from zero return investment or infinite, as Greg put it. Even if you have a non-rebated, even if it's zero rebated for the people who are, you know, concerned that a lot of this is still public funds that are funding it, even non-rebated costs is a reasonable return investment if you start taking into account typical energy costs and energy, you know, cost increases over time. Of course, this is also a huge demonstration evaluation resource, and it's going to be a benchmark for Edina's residents, students, and businesses. We just had discussion about PACE and private businesses trying to invest in this kind of technology. This would be, this would show if this thing works, is it really the return investment that we're expecting, and so on, so forth. And we have, this would also satisfy major commitment of the Green Stuff Cities Program, the ECLI Phase II, CDP Phase II, and the Mayor's Climate Agreement, which all of you are quite aware of. And, you know, I think it's going to demonstrate our city's leadership in putting innovation, new technology, that could potentially create jobs and other things, as part of a comprehensive energy and environment strategy. And just one more page, and I'll be done. And these are some of the extra benefits, which are not counted as part of the return on investment of some of these investments that we make as a community. The environment and health impacts of changing even a small amount of carbon-producing, carbon-using energy source versus a renewable energy source. Cleanup costs, medical cost savings because of a cleaner environment, the economic value and value to society, construction labor jobs in a depressed economy, increased local manufacturing activity. The consultant city staff have decided that a local Minnesota company is the best choice for this project, so that'll create some local jobs here. Energy and grid security, and, you know, lower dependence on foreign sources of energy. Solar is just fortunate to match the peak demand. It's going to be local generation. I mean, this list is just something that I put together. There's papers and articles and DOE white papers on this. So, thank you very much. I recommend that you vote to pass this project. And I'm available if you have more questions.
Question for Commissioner Iyer? Anyone on the council? I don't believe so. Oh, Member Sprague.
Just a quick comment. I want to thank you and your group for all the tenacity in pursuing this project from start to finish, because it was a roller coaster. And I just know we couldn't have got it done without you, so thanks to the entire commission and the working group for making this happen.
Thank you, Member Sprague. Thank you. Discussion? Polls in favor say aye. Aye. Polls say nay. We've got Bill Glenn here from the working group. And Bill, I think, just wanted to comment quickly on what he thought might be some process improvements, and I'm going to let you come up, Bill, and comment on those things.
Appreciate the opportunity to address you very briefly about the project.
Bill, would you give us your full name and address?
Oh, sorry. Bill Glenn, 6634 Normandale Road. And I am a member of the working group, but I really feel like I'm appearing here more as a citizen. As you heard, the working group supported the project, and despite the changes that have been made to the project, I still have some concerns about it. I am, in addition to a city property taxpayer, very happy to hear about the improvements and the bids that will help, notwithstanding the cash we have to put up front and carry for a number of years, that at the end of the day, that perhaps that will come out, even on the deal from the city property taxpayer perspective. As a state and federal income tax perspective, I'm afraid we don't have a situation where we're going to come out ahead, that the return for putting the solar panels up on this roof will not, at the end of the day, recoup the $80,000 cost of the grant that's being made to support the project. And then, the balance of the payment is going to come from the Renewable Development Fund of Excel Energy, which is billed back dollar-for-dollar to ratepayers. So as an Excel Energy electricity ratepayer, I'm not going to see that return on my investment. So, the bottom line is, you look at it as you, your role, your city council, the mayor and the city council, as you looked at it from your perspective, it comes out as a net positive for the city. Unfortunately, the point I'm making about process, there's nobody in this whole process to look at the entire project from society's standpoint. Whether you're a utility ratepayer and paying for the grant to 10K Solar, or whether you're a federal or state income taxpayer and paying for the grant, the $80,000 grant, no one's looking at it from society's standpoint. So what looks like the decision you just made is a perfectly logical decision. You end up with a project that, at the end of the day, never recovers a $200,000 investment that society puts into it. And so, once it's up on the roof, I'm afraid those distinctions about who paid for it get lost, and we have a $200,000 project that will not earn back the $200,000 in energy savings over the 20- to 30-year life of the equipment. So, again, I understand your role as city council members and elected officials for the city, but because Excel does not have a process, and the state and federal governments don't have a process, I wonder if there's some way we can include these larger questions of whether an investment in something is good from a societal standpoint, because we're not dealing with market forces here. There's no other mechanism to consider these larger issues about, do we earn back the grant? Do we earn back the other additions to it? So, perhaps as we go forward and consider other projects that you, as the city, are custodian of or owners of by being on your property, whether we're being good stewards of society's resources? And with the downgrades in our national credit limits and concerns about spending at the state and federal level, you know, do we have a role here at the city of being good stewards? I see the red light is on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. All right. I'll go, and then you can go. Thank you. We're going to move on to the next section of the agenda, which is correspondence petitions. Anything other than what we had on the diocese this evening?
It was all in front of you. I do, I did, I do have some information on the 70th Street project, some of the staff report and council minutes that I can pass down your way as well when we get to that point.
All right. Good. Thank you. Council comments. Member Brendel.
I just have one, and for me, it's a big one. Sunday evening was the annual torchlight concert at Centennial Lakes. The First John Philip Susan Memorial Band is sponsored by the City of Edina Park and Rec Department, and that sponsorship provides the band with a bandroom and a truck. And I don't know how many people are really aware that the band is really an integral part of our city. It performs in Edina about a dozen times a year. And Sunday evening was the culmination of our summer. We play about 11 concerts outdoors in June, July, and August. And we played a concert to 5,000, maybe more than 5,000 people at Centennial Lakes on Sunday evening. And it was an evening of great fun and music. The Model Boat Club had their boats lit up on the lake, and the concert actually starts at dusk, so by design, it is a concert in the dark. And the band is lit up, and the lake is lit up. We finish it with fireworks, and it is a phenomenal, phenomenal evening that's free and open to the public. And it doesn't come out, come without some costs, and we had some great community partners come forward and help to sponsor the event, Fairview Southdale, and the Centennial Lakes Partners, and Pin Stripes, all chipped in to help pay the costs of the event. And the costs are mostly the fireworks, but also some great entertainment. So just letting you know that this huge event did come off, and it was fabulous. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sure that, I was there last year, and it was just incredible, and it sounded like it was better yet this year, so. Member Bennett.
A brief response to Mr. Glenn, and that is, it's so important to have a variety of opinions and perspectives and knowledge represented on our boards and commissions and the committees that work with them. And thank you very much for your service. And you do raise some questions of process moving forward and how different voices are considered. But again, I think all of us value having that range represented on the bodies that we have some appointment or relationship with. Continuing with boards and commissions, two more items, and one is, we've talked about a manual for staff, a handbook of policies, and also some with the boards and commissions, some kind of workshop or board and commission responsib, oh my.
I have a prop.
We have a prop. My suggestion or request was that possibly we could even have a workshop that combined members of committees, boards of commissions, and council. Some of the topics will be shared, some of the topics will not be shared, and we don't all have to be there at all the same time. But an idea that we would understand roles, responsibilities, duties, legal restrictions, such as open meeting law and data practices, and I think we probably all could use a refresher in the manual I look forward to seeing. Finally, last board and commission-related thing is, I understand that the ETC will be meeting later this week, and with this feasibility study on the bridge going forward, I have just some, I know that the minutes are fairly comprehensive, but some of the questions that I have and know about are, what the history of discussions is with Hennepin County, what the status is of those conversations, what approvals are needed and where those stand, land discussions, whether those have been held with BiOle's or Sunrise, how exactly the pedestrian trail will connect, understanding that the design is speculative, but what is proposed. Funding, I know this, again, is in the minutes. Has a redirection of the federal funds been requested? If not, what would a timeline be on that? TIF money, I think there's been some comment that it can't be used for Accra crossings, but do we know that for sure? Then I did find it in the item in the CIP, in the CIP for 2011. It's not in the CIP. The bridge is not in the CIP prior to 2011, and the category that it's in, HRA, is also not in the CIP before 2011. What is in the CIP has a dollar amount of $4 million, but no project description or item identified. And so, we have also identified cost as something that we're very interested in and concerned about, and as we can get more information on that, it will enable us to be making some evaluations. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Swenson. Member Swenson.
I got from the United States Post Office, as a resident of 55424, a note that says that they are closing, or they have now closed, the auxiliary office out where you would pick up your mail. It's the one, I think, out by Cahill, if I'm not mistaken, and that now will be going to the Elmwood Post Office, which is the one right off of 136th Street. Are you familiar with what, that this has happened or anything about it?
No.
Because it covers all of 55424. What? Okay. They've reviewed their operation. They are closing their West Edina Carrier Annex, and they're moving everyone over for pickup of packages that couldn't be delivered, or mail that's held, to the Elmwood Post Office on 36th Street, which is just east of Highway 100.
So are you saying they're selling?
So my question is, the West Edina Carrier Annex, which is right next to Minnesota Maid and everything, do you know who owns that property? Okay. Can I pass this down to?
Yes, please.
There's one, oh, the thing on the bottom, ignore my writing on the bottom, because that was the other thing I was supposed to remember. I did get a call from a second large dry cleaner that is, has his establishment in Edina, who was upset with our arrangement with Waldorf Nevis. I kinda gave him some background on it, but he brought up an interesting point. You know, when we look at that, we look at it from the city's point of view, is the money that they owe us going to get covered by the value of the land or the building, should he not be able to go on? He felt that we had given somebody else an unfair advantage in bankrolling them, and he was hoping that we would be very careful going forward to make sure that the agreement that we had was going to be complied with, and if it was not, that we would go ahead and turn off the water. So I am gonna pass that piece of information on. And I told him it was new action for us, it was a new ordinance that we had come up with, and that it was our first time doing it, so that we were going slowly rather than quickly, but I now understood his point. And you're gonna bring up Seventieth St. Allway.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanna start with some deliverables for the ETC, since you brought up the bridge. Chair Janaby also had a list of outstanding deliverables that they had requested from staff, and I sent that list to Manager Neal. Do we have a timeline for completion? The reason I ask is, they have a lot of important planning tasks ahead of them, and they really need some of this valuable information to go forward.
I don't, as of this evening, have a timeline for the completion of those projects, but it is something that Director Hul and I are talking about, and I did have a conversation with Mr. Sullivan about it this week, so that we can begin to put that together. It is an extensive list, and it, but it is something that we want to be responsive to.
So someone can get back to the chair?
Certainly.
Okay. Chalston Park, I was reading the park board minutes from July. Chalston Park had an infestation, and then they had to do some reconstruction. Is that project complete?
I wonder, I think you're talking about the new playground equipment.
Yes.
There was an infest, there was an insect issue there that was associated with the organic material that was there for the fall zones. They removed that organic material, replaced it with small stones. I haven't heard about whether that issue is still, I know that issue is, that issue is not going on. I don't know whether that, whether that park has had its grand opening yet, but it should have by now. I will check on that for you.
We have a new communications advisory committee. Can you tell us the schedule for that roughly, and just how many people are on that?
I will. In fact, thank you, Councilmember Sprague, that was an item on my list as well. We have our first meeting of the City Managers Communications Advisory Committee next Wednesday night at 7:00. We've had, we've sent out probably about a dozen, a dozen invitation letters confirming people who had expressed an interest to us. I have understood that since we sent out the initial invitation letters, that we missed a couple of people who believe that they expressed interest. And if you hear from somebody that says, "I heard there's a meeting, I didn't get invited," please let me know. And we've done that with a couple of people already, but we will get them on the list. So we've sent them an invitation letter, we've sent them a great deal of background information to prepare for that meeting. And as I said, the first meeting is Wednesday night. It's focusing on our electronic presence on the internet, so our website, City Extra, our Facebook, our use of Twitter, all those sorts of things. We are focusing on that aspect of our image.
Thank you. Seventieth Street. So we've seen some correspondents come forward, it's in our correspondence packet. We've had a citizen come testify tonight, and I just, I need to find out background in terms of what was approved, especially in the section from West Shore to Wooddale. And my understanding, I drove by the construction today, we've got a, let's see if I get this right, a two-and-a-half-foot boulevard remaining after the bike lanes and then the, and then the driving lanes are installed, being reduced down from a four-foot, which is at other places along the corridor. And I think the concern is that, as understood by the residents originally, there would be tapering only at the intersections of West Shore, Wooddale, and Cornelia. And the tapering would there bring the boulevard down to two-and-a-half feet, but that there would not be any similar narrowing between West Shore and Wooddale. And the other point of clarification needed is, was the turn lane at Creston originally on the plan, as approved by the council? Because my understanding is, it's that lane that makes it impossible to have the four-foot boulevard in the middle of this block from West Shore to Wooddale. And then finally, about the traffic lights size, can you comment on that and what's spec'd and what we would normally do? And with that, is there any smaller light available? Thank you.
Hopefully, I can cover your questions, Councilmember Sprague. If I don't, obviously, chirp in there and let me know. What I did was, I quickly, from our workshop to now, I quickly put together a PowerPoint, knowing this was coming up. So I'm hoping that I have put down the, you know, some of the areas of interest here. The, this dryness you see in front of you is actually from our, the feasibility report that was presented to the city council at the public hearing and approved at the, at that public hearing. What's cut off here, and it was cut off on the, in the feasibility report, is West Shore. I do have that, I believe, on the, actually, yeah, West Shore is actually cut off on the drawing, so I captured Wooddale and Creston. Creston was, a left turn lane was part of that feasibility study. The original north, or the original west Seventieth Street, or the Greater Cornelia Study, had recommended left turn bays for Wooddale and West Shore and not Creston. However, when they were going through the design of this, that at Creston, it would leave about a six-foot median in this area here. And when they were looking at that, that, with the bike lanes, what that would do is, if somebody was making a left turn into Creston, going eastbound to northbound, somebody would be really apt, and they'd probably squeeze over on that six-foot median, somebody would actually, to get around them, would be going into the bike lane. And that's one issue that we have. If we have a lot of turning movements on a roadway and bike lanes, is people have a tendency to approach into the bike lane, make it an unsafe bike lane. So that's why they added that through the feasibility study. Here's a little bit of, more of a blown-up version of that. So when we talk about the expansion of the roadway, going from a 40-foot roadway, which was what it was prior, and going to 43 feet to accommodate the bike lane, the through movement, the turning movement, the other through movement in the bike lane, it does expand at the intersections, and as you, you need the stacking space to get the people off the roadway to make those left turn movements. And then you also have some, the tapers that bring it back between the intersections. And then as you're coming out of the intersections at West Shore and Wooddale, you're tapering it back, and the state aid standards are 30-to-1 taper, and that's why we, you have that long of a taper coming out of that area. This is actually, some of the comments was, can you restripe it in the future? You probably could, but you'd have different pavement types. So if you're eliminating the bike lanes and you restripe it, you're gonna have a five-foot bike gutter pan, basically, for a bike lane that you'd be going on. So my comment is, I don't believe that that would ever be the case in the future, that you would restripe it and eliminate the bike lanes once they have the bike lanes in there. We didn't, through the design, some of the other comments in the emails were, did we expand the lanes? No, the lanes are the same. They're 11-foot lanes, and there's no 12-foot lanes out here. I'm not sure how, well, you just can't taper it back and capture a four-foot boulevard through, between Wooddale and West Shore without eliminating, coming across and eliminating the left turn bays, lanes at both Creston and Wooddale. That would be basically the only way that you could capture the wider boulevard area. This is a couple of photos that, as it exists today, I think this was in some emails that went back and forth. This is south of Wooddale, or south of Creston, I believe, on both sides here, ones looking up and down the roadway. So you do have about a two-and-a-half to three-foot boulevard area. What our proposal is and was with the construction plans, is actually fill this area in. It's really tough to grow anything in that area when you have a lot of windrows in the wintertime and things like that, that compress that area. So what our proposal is, is similar to what we did on Concord, is that you would have a sidewalk, and then you'd fill it, fill that, that area in, where you typically can't grow anything with an exposed aggregate, which is this right here. And it's, and what that is, is it's basically, is regular concrete, and you treat the surface of it, and then you come back and you rinse off the, what they call the cream on the surface, so you have is the aggregate on the top portion of it. So it's really about the same, same that you have on the right here, but you just treat it differently, so then it creates more of a rumble strip area. So this is pretty much a standard detail that we use on all of our projects when we do not have enough room for a decent-sized boulevard where we could give vegetation to grow on that area.
Define decent-sized?
Four feet, you know, three, sometimes you can do it with three feet, if you have a homeowner that's, that, you know, takes care of it. But typically, four feet and above is what we try to shoot for. We try to actually put in a five-foot boulevard on all of our projects, because that's what the watershed rules are now, is that anything below five feet, you have to treat that surface area for water quality. So we've changed the standard up to five feet.
Where do we have a three-foot green boulevard? Do we have that anywhere?
Yeah, there are tons of, there are very narrow boulevards between the sidewalk and the roadway on Grimes Avenue, from Morningside Road to 42nd Street. People garden in them. There are also very, very narrow boulevard strips on Lynn Avenue from Morningside Road to 42nd Street. People garden in those. So it's done. Nobody's growing a tree in them, but people are growing things.
You know, that's one option you do have, is that if you don't want us to place the exposed aggregate, is to, we could put topsoil in and have people vegetate it. Kentucky bluegrass or sod's not gonna grow in that area. But if you have, like you say, other vegetation, like grasses, or some of the other ones that we're gonna be bidding out as far as the landscape plan, that Councilmember Sprague, that you had given us for neighbors from West Shore to 100, they possibly could, but people have to keep in mind that they have to maintain that area if they do plan to.
Member Swenson? Let's go, Member Swenson, then Member Bennett, then back to Member Sprague.
I live across from this picture that you just have, actually, the longer one right there. And what I think works so well with it is that when you plow it for the kids walking to school and every, and the people walking to bus stop, it plows much better. You don't have a problem with cutting up everything, the plants and everything that someone might have planted in the boulevard, because it's a pretty, it's close to the street. And when we had all that snow last year, you were able to come in and then move off the extra snow so that you could keep that sidewalk and the parking bay open. So for me, watching how it functioned, it functioned really well. And I don't find it unattractive, but...
You know, Councilmembers, the one difference of this photo from Seventieth Street is a lot of, one, you don't have a sidewalk on this side, but you have a lot of overstorey trees that are planted right behind the sidewalk for some reason. I'm not sure why the residents down there, over the years, have gravitated to that versus put them in the boulevard. So there is some open areas between Wooddale and West Shore, and in our specifications and our documents, we do have some overstorey trees that are bid out that we can plant. We don't have a home for those, but we do have that as part of the, well, we'll have it actually as part of the landscaping plan. And so, and what we're offering people is, if they would like an overstorey tree in their, in their front yard on their side of the sidewalk, is to recommend, you know, request that from us to put that in.
Member Bennett.
So just to recap and get some clarity, given the concerns that have been raised, I've got the feasibility study in front of me, and I'm looking at pages nine and 12. And it appears that, at least originally and as approved, we were looking at one-and-a-half-foot widenings on each side of three intersections, of Wooddale, West Shore, and Cornelia. The Creston left turn lane is in the design, but it's not called out on page 12 as being one of the places where the left turn lane was gonna require that widening. So when people say they didn't understand or expect this, I think that's, they didn't because it wasn't ever called out. At some point in the process, it became, understood that it was necessary, so this was spec'd, it was built as spec'd. Is that correct?
I think it was inadvertently left out, but if you look at the plan, it's included in the plan, in the feasibility study. So I think the verbiage, the text should have said that in hindsight, but if the plan that was included with the feasibility study was included in.
Well, I guess my second question is, did the contractor build what staff spec'd?
Yes, they did. Yeah.
Okay. Because that also changes what we can, what is reasonable. And I think, I've had some conversations, I know that others have had conversations as well. And what I think is a concern for residents other than expectation and what the process included, is also what it's going to look like going forward. And I know for Member Swenson, your street functions well, but this isn't what people thought they, and so, yeah.
I know, I get that, but I'm just trying to plow if you've got plantings there and they're gonna get chewed up, and then there's a huge snowbank on it that they have to remove. I don't know if that's gonna work very well.
Well, possibly, given what's been done. I, we know that from a traffic calming perspective, that concrete gives people that feeling of a wide-open roadway, and people do have a tendency to go faster. It's one of the reasons why trees make such a nice streetscape. So we don't have the width of boulevard that we were going to have. It is built as spec'd, meaning that the concrete is there. What can be done with a small boulevard? We do know from some other areas of town that there are plantings that will grow, particularly durable grasses, which I believe Mr. Wilkins recommended. And there are some, I've seen some driveway strips, very nice use of just single row of grasses of certain height. I think there's an understanding among residents that that's not going to be able to go all the way to the corners because of visibility, some of the line-of-sight issues that have been raised by other residents. But I think that would be, I guess I would like to know what residents would like, but I would be reluctant to say, you're gonna get concrete aggregate, you're gonna get something that you didn't expect through the public process, and now it's going to be finished with something that's way beyond what you thought you were getting.
Member Sprague, and then I'll ask a question.
I drove the Concord today, and I gotta agree, it's not, it's handsome. I mean, it looks decent. When you have greenery, I mean, you get to look at the whole corridor, not just that strip. On Seventieth, you know, with a five-foot bike lane, that's more of a signal to the drivers than this little two- drivers than this little two and a half inch boulevard. I mean, it, it's concrete all the way across anyway, but this is a bike lane. To me, that sends a different signal to the, to the driver, even though it's concrete. My, my, my concern, I mean, it'd be nice, you know, landscaping is nice to do. It's how, how it is maintained and what, what could possibly be installed there. That would, that would be a concern. I mean, what, I don't know if, if you have a recommendation in terms of species or, or what it would be, you know, she talked about grasses throughout, but either way, that's, that's on the, it's not, is it, that's not something the city would pay for, that we would, it's either sod or dirt is a deliverable on the boulevard either way, correct?
That's, that's what our past practice has been is, as far as the species that would work, I'm obviously not a landscape architect, but I know the, the Franklin, uh, Street Bakery up on Sunny Side, I worked with them on a grade issue and, and ended up putting in, I think, might've been a smaller or some type of a coral forest or glares or something like that, that, that did survive last winter, of all winters to survive, so.
But either way, it's, it doesn't address the width issue, which is, is the other concern. They feel that there was, it was not disclosed. Now, it either was or wasn't on the feasibility. It wasn't in the typed report, it was in the design. Although the design is, you know, it's not a layperson's document, but.
Well, the, the, the design actually is this layout right here and this is right out of the feasibility report. This isn't the construction document. What, what this is, is a striping plan for the construction document. So this was part of the, part of the feasibility study. I mean, nothing's been held back from, from the residents on it. It should have been covered more, more so in the text than what, what it was, but it, but it was part of that, you know, public documents that have been recorded, whatever.
If the left turn lane was in, at Creston originally, um, there's, there's no way to taper. I mean, it just wasn't communicated, but there's no way to taper and that's the, that's just the plain and simple fact.
I think, um, in looking at these, setting aside the width issue and I can't recall, I'll have to go back and look at my notes at home and look at the feasibility study again, but when I look at that, that two and a half foot wide band and what you could do with it to enhance, uh, people recognizing this as a residential neighborhood so we don't, we don't end up defaulting back to what we had before, which was causing people to increase their speed. As Member Bennett has said, I think landscaping is a key. So it, what I recall was that we were going to get neighborhood input on both the roundabout and the, uh, the traffic island by Christ Presbyterian, that we were going to jack out all that asphalt and there was going to be some landscaping material that went in there as well. And it seems to me that in the process of working with our landscape architects and keeping in mind what we did on Seventieth over by the Galleria, that there ought to be some continuity there. And it strikes me that some of these, um, tough prairie grasses, these perennials could survive pretty well through here, but I think it would be important to have some kind of a uniform look and not just let it be a random sort of situation where somebody decides to plant a mini garden and somebody else decides to have grasses and somebody else decides to have lazy, uh, black eyed Susans, you know? So I think this to me affords an opportunity for a, a great landscape designer to say, here's what I think you ought to do. It's going to help slow traffic down. It's going to beautify the West Seventieth Street. And so we've got those beautiful entrances on both ends saying to a driver, you're coming into a, a residential neighborhood now, so pay attention. And, uh, I'd, I'd like to see some landscaping material in here frankly and not use concrete. Personal opinion.
And Mayor, you're talking about, I mean, to make it uniform, then it would be on the city dime to do that.
I'd, I'd be willing to have that conversation.
Okay. And then, and then maintenance would be, I mean, there's not much maintenance on something like that.
Well, I mean.
We've got other islands that we're maintaining.
They're the, they're the scent, the island at West, at Cornelia and the island at West Shore Drive on the north side already being maintained.
Yeah, we, we do maintain the islands. The boulevards have always been maintained by the residents in the city. And if we, if we start, you know, if we, if we start to maintain a, a corridor, what happens to the next quarter that we approach, that we set precedence on it? And then we just had the discussion about staffing and labor and, you know, do we, you know, I mean, we're already, already struggling to keep up the Seventieth and the Sixty Sixth Street and all of our other corridors that we have vegetation on with, with the staffing levels. So how do, I mean, how do you go down that road?
That's a fair discussion, that's a fair discussion to have.
I'd be comfortable at this point planting it if it's what we want and it gives a look that's going to calm the traffic. I'm not comfortable maintaining it and replacing it. So I guess from my standpoint, um, you know, if we were just to put sod in, which is what we would normally do, then they, it's up to them to replace. I think I hear the mayor asking for something a little bit different than that and I would be okay with that as long as we don't have to maintain it.
What, what about if we install it, you know, and the caveat is if it's not maintained, then it's going to be aggregate down the road? I mean, if it all fails because it's not maintained, we can't, we don't want to have an unsightly strip.
That's, well, your opportunity for aggregate is now.
I think it's an opportunity for a volunteer and you have one because Colby Wilkins already volunteered to do this. And he is an avid gardener and environmentalist. So if in fact he is willing to do it and that is really, it, it impacts him directly. And he's been part of the expansion of trees along highways and that being a school project where the kids planted them at countryside school and got them big enough to transplant along the highways from Mindot to take and transplant. He's got a nice track record in things like this, in community involvement in environmentalism. So he, uh, he said in, in our, in our, in our packets in the letter he sent, well, he couldn't be here tonight. It's something that he's passionate about and willing to take on.
As long as he lives there.
As long as he lives there, which means that then it's, there are other cities that have volunteer corps that manage things like this. Excelsior, that's how Excelsior manages its, its boulevards and its gardens is through volunteers. So it's an opportunity. The, now that, now that I'm talking here, my preference would be something green. When you put the slide up, um, that shows Concord Avenue, um, on the one side, you've got the aggregate, on the other side, you've got the, the green all the way to the curb. The green all the way to the curb is the best signal there is, that this is a residential area. And, um, so that's, I mean, that's what I see. If this is, uh, if this is such grass, if this is a, a grass that filters stormwater, that kind of thing, great. But an, an aggregate like that, that just sends water into the storm drain, I'm, I'm less, I'm much less excited about that from a beautification standpoint and an environmental standpoint. The stoplight at West Shore, there were people asking for a stoplight that looks more residential than, um, than highway and I'd like to see us honor that.
Can I, can I finish this other subject first?
Sure, sure.
With the landscape and then we'll get into the stoplight issue. So if I hear the council is that we would go back and offer the residents, um, the opportunity to plant it, that we would come up with a planting plan and then, and then we would give them some instructions how to maintain it in the future and, and go forward with that or, or if we'll help, I mean, I need some direction on how we go forward with this.
I'm concerned about the future of the strip. You know, if it doesn't get maintained by the residents, then, and it fails because it's not weeded and it's not watered, then we have a dead section and that, that's not a beautification either. So it's almost like if we do this, why don't we take it on as we take on, no? Take on, well, that, at least it's guaranteed to be maintained.
You, you, you don't, if you go down by Galleria, you'll see that where they tried to use sod on the north side, it doesn't work. So, but what I'm thinking is that these big prairie grasses that we've used in the islands in the roundabouts, they are tough as nails. I suspect that a landscape architect could tell you whether or not they can withstand the rigors of a Minnesota winter with the salt getting sprayed up there and everything else. Now, they get a little bit more separation from the road over on the roundabouts, a little bit greater distance, but to me, something like that has a chance. Sod has no chance. I don't think those, although they've done pretty well, uh, the lilies up around juries, they get probably some road spray on them. They do pretty well. They're tough. They come back every year, it seems like. So that's a possibility. If you want something green, that's a possibility.
Excelsior Boulevard.
But I, I say let the neighbors talk about it and, uh, I hate to, you know, we've, we've had them involved all the way along. You know, maybe they'll come back and say, I just put in the, uh, things they did in Concord, the cement. I don't think it's a good look.
We're doing a, a neighborhood planting project. It's all private sector funded, funded though, from nine houses on, on the block of Seventieth from West Shore down to CPC. But we're, we're paying for the plantings. They're delivering the dirt as they do on every project and, uh, but they're allowing, um, staff has, has bid it out so that we can get some numbers on the plants and get wholesale on the plants. But the residents are still taking responsibility for the price and for the maintenance. And so I, you know, I wonder if that's the model to go with, if they, you know, we, we all agreed to do that on that block. If they want to agree to the costs and the maintenance.
This is.
Because I, what I feel like is when you have skin in the game, then you maintain it, whether it's this owner or the next owner.
This is different in the sense that I, I remember really clearly the discussions about the foot and a half on each side at Wooddale, West, West Shore, Wooddale and Cornelia. We were clear on that. We never talked about widening at all at Creston, let alone widening then was going to stretch back. So it is different, I think. And, and, and perhaps there's a balance with what you say, because it is important for people to feel invested in something. And yet also a balance between, it's been, it's been built according to plan, we're clear on that now, but thi- this is not, other than seeing that left turn lane on that design, I didn't know that I was approving a widening of the street to forty-three feet from West Shore to Wooddale. That was not, we really did not discuss that.
That was not.
So what do we do now? We can't, it was built according to spec. The contractor did the contractor's job. What can we do as a city? And you and your neighbors are sharing in the cost of your plantings. Perhaps what can, what happens here with this two long, two block long strip, and it's both sides if I understand correctly, that the planting, the cost of the planting would be paid by the city and the cost of the material in this instance. And the initial planting would be done by crews who did the plantings in the islands or the plantings in the roundabout. I suppose if people are master gardeners or want to do their own planting.
It'd be in the spring of next year.
The maintenance then becomes the responsibility of, of the residents, maintenance and replacement.
And then in terms of, how about materials? Should we get some input from a landscape architect on what might work there for materials?
Yeah, we've got one on our planning commission.
But we actually, we, we do have and that, and those plans are going, are going to be posted this Friday or, or Monday. So we're on our way with that. We did, we did get citizen input. We actually met with, with, uh, some, some residents that Josh put together down Public Works one day and, and took their input, took the emails and such like that for that and came up with a plan on it. So I, I think if, if we have the nine homes that are to the west, is that we would carry that same look, so you have the uniformity as you're coming through and we take those plants and, and plant them and then, and let the residents know that, that the exposed aggregate won't be, be placed and that we'll be putting topsoil in for this fall. Um, and we're going to have to do something for erosion control this fall, but next spring that it will be planted with, with those types of plants.
No, that's a good idea because you give, they still have choice. We, in our, in our system, we're laying them shoes between Stella Door, which is the gold, the lemon yellow or the red. They get to choose. So you could do the same thing here for, for each plot or you could just have it one, you know, have them choose a varietal for both sides.
Doing all daylilies?
All daylilies, but we're, we're, each person is choosing their color for their segment. It might be different here, maybe you want more uniformity. I mean.
I think, well, this is me personally, but I think somehow we ought to carry through that theme from over by Galleria on the roundabouts with the grasses and the plantings, but you know.
We, we looked at that and, and the, um, at least the group that we met with is that, that they, they wanted it uniform from France to one hundred, but they wanted to differentiate a little bit because that's a commercial area and they're going into a residential area. So it, it does vary just, you know, slightly, it'll be all vegetated, but it won't have the same identical look, um, by the Galleria in, in that area.
Director Hall, you still will put aggregate right at the corners though, so that there are clear sightlines, correct? So we don't have any sightline issues?
That's, that's correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Other thing I, oh, go ahead.
Well, daylilies are really durable. Um, anything, anything with that taproot also, Echinacea, Rebecia, although if it's not in bloom or if the bunnies get it, then you're sunk. Um, so daylilies are more practical probably in that way, grasses also. If people didn't participate in the design before, because you're saying that this went east to West Shore Drive, correct?
Our, in ours?
Your nine.
Our nine is from West Shore, west to CPC.
Sure. So would it, is it workable then to approach the homeowners on this two block area, north and south of West Seventieth and say, you weren't part of this before, you thought you were getting boulevard and sod. It's not been, as the design was fleshed out, it was not feasible. This is, this was built according to specification. Now there's a choice of uniform plantings and your neighbors to the west are going with daylilies.
I think that's a great idea. Yep. And then it gives you a chance to meet with them and they can make, make whatever choice the landscape person comes up with.
I need to get something firmed up in my mind though. I feel like whenever I bring this up, I don't quite get a clear answer and that, are we jacking that asphalt out by CPC on the traffic triangle and putting in plantings there?
Actually on both sides of one hundred, on the west side and.
West side too. That's just, that was my next question. That's, that's really critical, I think, so thank you for that. That's going to be fabulous.
I guess one last comment, um, just picking up on your comment about having the uniformity of the roundabouts along Seventieth coming west. In this area, I can see that the plantings along the boulevards should be different because that's residential. The planting in the roundabout at Valley View, the planting in the median on both sides of Highway a hundred ought to coordinate with the roundabouts so that that's more part of the street and then you have the boulevard plantings being more residential.
Just don't put the no more grass in there, okay?
We, we actually have a plan and it is different. We have it out, it's going to be going out for bid and we have to get it out to bid this fall so that they can set those plans aside, so that they can plant them next spring. I'll, I'll bring, for the next council packet, I'll put that plan in the back of your packet so you can take a look at what the plan is. But I think you'll be very impressed with.
The plan you're talking about though is for Public Works?
No, no. This is for, uh, this is for West Seventieth Street.
For Seventieth? We're staying on Seventieth? Okay, good, good.
Exactly. So that's what I thought we were on. But I, um, now as far as the traffic signals go, the, the traffic signals, you know, we, we did, um, have the, the bronze paint color. You typically would have a, a gray and yellow traffic signal if you're talking about a highway signal or a county signal. So we, we are, virtually all of our signals are, are bronze, bronze in color for the, the posts and the mast arms. The, uh, the heads on them, they do look large. I mean, they're, this is very similar to when the Vernon and Gleason signal went up, they looked out of place at first because it was never there. And after a while, it, it does blend into the background, but the, the actual signal heads is that they're, they, they used to have an eight inch bulb on, on most signals. They've gone to a twelve inch bulb as the population becomes a little more mature and such as that, to see, see those, those bulbs. So, um, I think we can blame ourselves as, as things become larger and fonts and everything become larger and our signs and stuff that, that, you know, of the size of that, they don't, they're, they're installed, those do take, I think, eight to ten weeks somewhere in there to actually, to order them up. They don't have them sitting on a shelf somewhere. So if you do switch it up, we've already bought in those signals. They're, they're ours and we can't return them and get a, you know, ten percent restocking fee or something like that. So it is what it is out there and, and that's the, the standard. Now, I think if you did deviate from the standard and you had an accident or something, I would suspect that our city attorney would say that we probably would have liability issues of going away from what the, the standard is in Minnesota.
When you say standard, you mean Mindot?
Yes, and, and that's, uh, you know, part of that traffic signal is paid with the state aid funds because it meets warrants and so that, so they're, they're the ones that we use their requirements or standards for, to, for spec, specifying those signals out.
So you're talking about bulb size. Is overhang required by Mindot?
Yes, and, and, uh, in that situation, um, the, the newer designs do have the mast arms so that they do overhang the, the travel lanes. Unlike the, if you go into Minneapolis, a lot of the older, um, styles. Um, unlike the, if you go into Minneapolis, a lot of the older, um, styles just have them, just a, a post and a, and a, and a, a traffic head or sig, you know, the signal, um, is on a post versus on a mast arm.
You know, one, one last thing, sorry. Um, just for clarification, we had a joint meeting with the school board yesterday afternoon and we alluded a little bit to the alternate routes for school buses. And if people are watching, since we're talking about Seventieth Street, um, maybe we can just say a few words about the fact that, that plans are in place so that the school buses can get where they need to get. Are you part of that conversation?
I'm not, I'm not familiar with that conversation, but, but in, in this design, you know, keep in mind for like the speeds too is that we will have a detection system that, uh, the, the traffic signals will go to red at, at random so, so people aren't blowing through the red lights. But if they are speeding over the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit is that they'll go to, go to red. And then the phasing coming out of the school will be changed to accommodate the school buses when they get out of school at the end of the day. And I think that's maybe like what the conversation was.
What do you, what do you expect for queuing at rush hour at that one?
At Cornelia?
No, no, West Shore. When it's installed, you know, queue lengths.
I'd have to go back through the, the report and see what the actual queue lengths are.
But the, the, the signal obviously changes with the peak hours so that.
That's right.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so.
And then the west of, west of Highway one hundred on that island, what kind of landscaping are you going to do there?
I'll, I'll bring that forward to you. Like I say, I'm not a landscape architect, I don't, can barely pronounce the words much from, remember them, so on the landscape side, so.
All right. Thank you. Member Sprague, did you have something else?
Yes, my final note, um, I haven't confirmed this. I asked Clerk Mangan to check this out, but I'm pretty sure when I complete the Square Lake Triathlon next month, I will be the first Edina council member in the history to complete a triathlon. So, um, I'm very excited about that and, uh, interestingly enough, some Edina residents helped me gear up. I went to Edina Bike and Sport and they got me a great road bike. Uh, I'm really thankful for them and their technicians that helped me learn how to use it. And then Urban Try, which is a new store in Minneapolis owned by a resident from, uh, Country Club, geared me up with all, all kinds of stuff. So thank you to my fellow Edina residents for helping me get geared up, uh, to make this historical, um, this historical event happen. That's all I got.
All right. I guarantee you, Member Bennet could do it without practicing, without training. I don't know about the swimming part, but, all right. Um, let's see, on, uh, August ninth, we cut the ribbon over at Alex in Candyland. If you have noticed that, over at Fifty-Fourth and France, uh, in Ed Noonan's building. Alex is his daughter, Alex Noonan, who was a twenty-one or twenty-two-year-old college graduate who researched what works well and what kind of business works well in a recession and decided that candy looked pretty, uh, recession-proof. And from the number of people that were there for the opening, it looked like she was off to a good start. Store modeled apparently after one in New York City owned by Ralph Loren's daughter. So, uh, good luck to Alex and everybody involved in Candyland. Um, the next night at Public Works, Wayne Hul and Jesse Strube hosted the, uh, Clean Air Event. They were great, did a great job with all the folks that were there. I don't know what, we had maybe a hundred people there, you think, or seventy-five? For the lesson that, a nice turnout, um, a well-done event, lasted a couple hours. People seemed to really enjoy themselves, had a good discussion on a variety of clean air-related topics. Uh, then on August eleventh, which was last Thursday, I made a trip down to Indianapolis at the request of, uh, ULI Indianapolis to talk to a bunch of mayors about forming a regional council of mayors. And there were about eight mayors that showed up, including the mayor of Indianapolis, John Chardelot from Bonestro and I were down there. John was representing ULI Minneapolis. We met with them for about an hour and a half and then, uh, in anticipation of going down there, I, um, I contacted Simon, the people we've been working with at Simon. So I met with both John Phipps and Bill Hammer, uh, in their building, which is right across from the Capitol downtown, beautiful building. And, um, and then David Cordis, who is the head of all mall operations, came down to meet me as well, a fairly recent hire for Simon. And, um, they showed me the plans they have for the food court, which were phenomenal, just terrific looking. The entrances, the entrance, uh, work looked, uh, superb, I thought. We also looked from a distance at one of the housing, apartment buildings done by the, the developer in Indianapolis that is looking at this site. And they are quite a ways along in their discussions of a land lease in the southeast corner. And it would be basically a, an apartment that would be, uh, um, have four sides to it and parking in the middle out of sight. And then you would just, you'd just drive to the level and, and where your unit is. You'd get out and, uh, you know, if you're on the third floor, you drive to the third floor, get out. The building's four stories and so they expect that they will be coming to us within a couple of months with this proposal. I think it was a little over three hundred units. And, um, and they seemed quite optimistic about it. So, um, and Simon did as well. The renderings were already quite advanced. So, uh, I talked to them a little bit about the conversation that we've been having, you know, kind of, um, talked further about where some of the folks on the council are, you know, in terms of, uh, level of comfort. We're kind of all in somewhat different places. I think Member Sprague and Member Brindle are pretty much united in their outlook on, on, um, public investment or public assistance. Uh, they're going to look at a few ideas that Ellers has thrown out and tell us what they think might work, what might not work, come back to us again. So I think we'll see them within the next couple of months for another discussion about, um, what might be a, a worthwhile public investment, uh, in that, uh, in that area. Not necessarily in their property, but maybe on the site and definitely in the area. So that'll be an interesting discussion for all of us to continue. Member Sprague?
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Did, did they discuss the Ring Road at all?
They did not. They did discuss the fact that they've been having ongoing transit discussions with Metro Transit that have been real productive.
Okay.
Uh, in that northeast corner and, and had some, uh, some site plan drawings of that area. It's, probably doesn't rise to the level of structure that we thought would, uh, be appropriate, but nonetheless was nicely done. Kind of a, I'd call it, kind of like a giant bus stop, you know, very elongated, very stylish, uh, probably had heat inside, people could get out of the weather a little bit. Um, but they did not, we did not talk about the Ring Road, so put that on your list. We'll talk about that when they come back up here. And, uh, let's see, what else? Um, that's it for me. Manager Neal?
Thank you, your honor. I did show you this, uh, prop earlier and, uh, I want to give full credit to Ms. Mangan for her work in creating this. It is, uh, a lot of effort actually. Turned out to be a pretty big project to figure out where all our policies are and when they were adopted and putting them all into this format. So I wanted just to give you, to let you know, it is being worked on, we are putting it together. Next stage is to, is to begin to do some quality control on that document, but it is moving ahead. Um, next thing is I wanted to let you know that, uh, one of Ms. Kurt's, uh, first, uh, projects is off and running and that is to look at our board and commission, uh, not, not our board and commission process, but the way that we handle boards and commissions and, uh, how we interact with staff and, and, uh, and how we, what we can do to improve that process. And she has, we've already had a, a meeting with our board and commission liaisons. The next thing she's going to be doing is, is lining up meeting with board and commission chairs and then creating a survey instrument to really get, uh, to try to get some input from board and commission members themselves on what they think of our, of our process and, and how they think we can work better with them. Uh, just to do a, I wanted to follow up the council's discussion last week on the TLC action. Director Hul and I had a chance to talk with Steve Clark. We had a teleconference with him last week. He gave us some, uh, indications that we needed to, uh, provide some additional written verification of not only what we've done, but also the background of what we intend to do. He gave us some insight on what we ought to say in that written communication. Uh, so we're producing that and we're going to get that over to them next week. They have a board meeting coming up on the twenty-sixth of August at which they will, um, take up the, the council's action and, and let us know whether that will, uh, be, that will suffice for them or not. I, I think I said earlier, we have our first meeting of the Communications Advisory Commission, uh, that is next Wednesday. Uh, I too have also heard from two of Waldorf Nevin's direct competitors and they did not appreciate the fact that they think they're at a competitive disadvantage, but they also appreciated the fact that we're taking the issue on. So I got both of those opinions from them. I'm going, uh, on Monday for, uh, my first chance to meet the, uh, new leadership at the Greater MSP Economic Development Group. Um, on, on Monday they have, uh, they're doing an event at, I think at Central Library downtown.
Right.
And, um, I'm going to attend that. Been doing a lot of, while beginning, I will beginning to be doing, um, a number of presentations now for city staff on the Quality of Life Survey. I did one today for, uh, planning, assessing and building inspection staff. Um, great results, it's a fun presentation to do. Uh, we have my six-month performance review next week, um, on Tuesday. And finally, we had our new human resources director start her new job yesterday. Lisa Shaper is here. Uh, we were successful in overwhelming her on the first day, uh, but she did come back yesterday and I expect her back tomorrow and the day after and the day after. So I think, um, she's already making an impact. Um, she got her first email on an employee issue at six AM on Monday morning before she even showed up. So already hard at work, so we think she's going to work out just great. And that's all I have, thanks.
All right, thank you. That prompt anything else for the rest of the council? All right, we stand adjourned.